I think I just turned it on. Yes, okay, good. Obviously, we have a full house, more than full. And we have one case we want to go through first, which is ZON 22-0004. But I'm going to give you my overall announcement first of what goes on tonight. And we may have to do a little bit of reorganizing when we're completed with the first case, just because of the numbers of people and number and the amount of paperwork that's been turned in. So, my name is Joan Woodard, and I'm your hearing examiner for this evening. The purpose of this hearing is to allow me to take and receive evidence and testimony on the matters that are pending before me. I make a recommendation only to the county commissioners. I do not make the final decision. I will be submitting my recommendation to staff within two weeks of this evening's hearing. The application will then be scheduled for deliberations before the county commissioners. If you wish to give testimony, you need to fill out one of the forms in the back or wherever they're doing them tonight. And when you come to the podium, please remember to give me your name and your address before you start to give your testimony. First, staff will introduce the application, then we will hear from the applicant. After the applicant's testimony, we will hear, we will then get into all the public comment sheets. We will hear from those who are in favor, those who are neutral, and then those who are opposed. The public not speaking will be read into the record. We will then give the applicant and/or their representative an opportunity for rebuttal of any testimony stated into the record from the public before we close the public hearing. After that point, we will receive no further testimony. The time limits are 30 minutes for the applicant's presentation, three minutes for individual public testimony, and 15 minutes for group testimony where people have donated their time. I ask that you always direct all of your testimony directly to me, not to the audience. I have a gavel, and I'm going to get very noisy with it if you guys start clapping or laughing or booing, because it's not appropriate for this kind of a hearing. I do hope that everybody's nice and respectful to each other. Any questions? Okay. We will also have to be hearing from those who are on Zoom. I forgot to mention that. And so, we're ready to start then with our first case this evening, which is ZON 22-0008. Not keen on hearing myself in a five-second delay. Oh.
Good evening. For the record, Vlad Finkel with Cooten County Community Development. I'd like to clarify that the case number is ZON 22-0004. It's likely that it might be just a typo.
On the wrong.
The request is by Kerr Family Properties LLC to rezone an 80-acre parcel of land from agriculture to rural. The subject property is located near State Highway 53 at the intersection with Mountain View Road. The purpose of this request is to be able to pursue a major subdivision application, which would consist of 16 residential lots. In fact, the applicant did submit a concurrent application for 16-lot major subdivision. That application cannot move forward with a public hearing at this time due to the fact that the Board of County Commissioners has to grant approval of the zone change first before the other project can be taken under advisement. It's currently in the queue, but as soon as we go through this hearing tonight and if the recommendation is for approval, we will schedule a second hearing in front of the Board of County Commissioners as required pursuant to our Land Use and Development Code. And then, the board will hear the matter again. If they side with the hearing examiner's recommendation to approve the case, they could deliberate on the matter at that time. Otherwise, they would have to schedule a third hearing if the recommendation and the board's desire are not consistent. The subject property is fairly level. It's fairly well vegetated at this time. The comp plan designation is suburban, and it's adjacent to transitional comp plan designation. However, it is not located within, the subject property is not located within any area of city impact, and so it's not subject to those rules and regulations at this time. The suburban comp plan designation does allow for or contemplate having the property being subdivided into lots that are for residential use. These are some of the photos of the subject property in question. We have a photo key on the right-hand side. Majority of the photos were taken along the State Highway 53 route facing different directions. As you can see, there is areas, there are areas on the subject site that may have been logged in the near future to provide an access road. So perhaps the aerial photo is a little bit outdated. During the agency comment period, we solicited comments from various agencies with jurisdiction. We received very little response because technically, there's very limited any impacts associated with a zone change. Impacts are primarily more of a concern for mitigation purposes through an actual subdivision process when the density is being proposed or is being created. We did not get a comment from Lakes Highway District, although they will be part of the review process for the subdivision for internal roads. The Idaho Transportation Department official, I was in contact with them at least three different times, and I had requested comments specifically related to the zone change. And unfortunately, I didn't get any specific, you know, comments on that. They didn't voice their position. They did state that future access approach requirements will apply for them to gain access for the interior road off of Highway 53. It's a pretty standard procedure for site distance and other safety factors that ITD has to consider. The Health Department really had no issue, but they will be overseeing future septic systems in each lot. And if the applicant does decide to move forward with a water system, then they will be part of that review along with DEQ. As far as I recall, I think they are proposing individual wells, so I don't believe that's a non-issue at this time either. Lakes, excuse me, Northern Lakes Fire District had no comments, but they will have future comments on access as well as fire suppression. We did receive two comments in opposition. Concerns were related to additional traffic. I understand, as a planner, that this is a typical comment on any time we receive a request for additional density to be created, but I believe and trust in our agencies to provide appropriate recommendations and requirements that in turn will be imposed as conditions of approval for mitigation purposes. So, I have underlined the purpose of the comp, of the suburban comp plan designation, and the primary purpose is, in this designation, is to promote the development of vacant or underused parcels. Well, this is clearly the case. The rezone would allow the applicant to subdivide the property. Just to put this on the record for public's knowledge, currently, agricultural zone prohibits any division on land, of land unless it meets certain criteria for exemption, which a standard subdivision does not meet that criteria. With that, I don't have any additional comments at this time and stand for any questions that you have.
I don't have any at this time. Thanks, Vlad. So, I just want to clear up. I might have a paper problem. I've got Jordan in favor who wants to speak, and I've got Jeremy, applicant, and doesn't say whether there's a speaking role or not.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought that was assumed.
Okay. Okay. That's okay. Fine. Yes, got it.
Okay. Good evening. Jeremy Turzuli. I work with Olson Engineering located in Post Falls, Idaho, representing the Kerr family for this request. I did not put together a presentation this evening because I felt that the staff review and Vlad's comprehensive plan analysis summarized everything we were trying to do here quite clearly. We believe that this fits perfectly with the comprehensive plan and the suburban future land use map designation. Vlad laid that out really well. Couple of points I wanted to touch on and perhaps amplify a little bit was the fact that during this request for zone change, that all agencies were notified and had no comments or concerns at this point in time. Vlad is correct. Typically, Lakes Highway District and ITD don't weigh in on the zone change. They will weigh in on the subsequent subdivision request. Our firm has been in contact with ITD. They've seen our preliminary site plan and our proposal. As well as Lakes Highway, we've had a lot of communication with them. ITD indicated that they didn't feel that this request and the future subdivision would rise to the level of requiring any additional turnbays on Highway 53, but of course, they'll reserve that for the actual application. The Lakes Highway District has indicated that they will likely take control of the road. The county and the county staff indicated that we would have to reserve connectivity to the south of our subdivision, but again, that's sort of downstream of this. So, additional connectivity and street networking will be available through this site if the Highway District and Department of Transportation deem it necessary. So, with regard to its current zoning of agriculture, this close to the city of Rathrum and along the highway, it really is not a viable use agriculture on this property other than timber, or perhaps, if it were cleared, hay might be able to be grown there, but between irrigation, irrigating the whole property and harvesting hay, it's really not financially feasible. So, this request is so that the family can use this property for its highest and best use, which will be, if approved, 16 5-acre homesites. Again, that helps hopefully relieve some of the pressure of the lack of inventory in the housing market. Our guess is that some current residents in perhaps tract housing in Rathrum or within the area could use this as move-up housing and ultimately relieve some and bring some resale opportunities onto the market. So that's a hope. To bridge on to Vlad's point in the staff report, they'll always look at the consistency of the neighborhood and the general neighborhood context. I wanted to point out that I put a perimeter around this property of a half-mile in every direction, and that half-mile radius indicates the properties in the immediate vicinity in that half-mile radius, properties that are less than five acres, there are six of those, properties of five acres, there are 158 of those, 10-acre properties, there are 23, properties greater than 10 acres, there are four. So, this blends seamlessly with the surrounding area. And then, I did read the comments from the two individuals that submitted comments during the commenting period with regard to traffic. And to Vlad's point, a lot of people, for some people, one additional car on the road is too much. So I did bring an exhibit. This is produced by KMPO, which is sort of the traffic authority in the area, and based on the 2040 plan, and that is projecting growth at 2040, this area of Highway 53 is still at less than 70% of design capacity per KMPO, and that is 17 years from now. There is one choke point between this property and Rathrum, indicated as a node. I did bring a supportive document for you to look at as part of the record.
That'll be HE 1001. Thank you.
So if you'll look at the sort of pink asterisk that I put there, that is the subject property. Notice the gray on Highway 53 in that area. A gray indicates not even reaching a level of service grade for that section of highway, which indicates that not yet at 70% design capacity.
The host would like you to unmute your microphone.
For that section of roadway. Look at the purple dot between there and Rathrum. That purple dot anticipates a node issue, and this is due to the fact that north and south of Highway 53 right there will be annexed into the city of Rathrum. That's the projection. And without control at those intersections, that could become problematic. But those designs are already in the works. They anticipate some intense residential development in that area, and that little dot indicates we need to make sure that we plan accordingly for this intense residential use in this area. But the point I really wanted to focus in on is that between Ramsey Road and Rathrum city limits, 20 years from now, KMPO does not believe that traffic capacity on this section of Highway 53 will rise above 70% of design capacity. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
Got it.
Other than that, again, I believe that the staff report was very clear and concise. I did note in their summary that they recommend approval of this and respectfully request approval as well. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
I have none.
Thank you very much.
And as I say, I do have Jordan House, who says he's in favor but does not wish to speak. Was that for this?
No.
No? Wrong one? Then you probably need to fill out a more correct piece of paper. Do we have anyone, any other, so we don't have any other comment sheets in the House with regard to neutral in favor or opposed? Do we have any on Zoom?
Anyone on Zoom, if you'd like to speak to this issue, unmute yourself now.
Yes, my name is, oh, go ahead. Hi, my name is Ruth York. I would like to speak if I could. I am opposed.
Go right ahead.
Just give your address, please.
My address is, yep. My address is 704 North Seventh Street in Boise, Idaho. That's the headquarters of a statewide nonprofit that I'm a part of. Were you able to hear that okay?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm the executive director of a statewide Idaho nonprofit called Families and Youth of Idaho. We support, educate, and advocate for youth and families needing medical services.
Ruth, 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 excuse me, I'm going to stop you. I think, I think you're speaking with regard to our next case. We haven't called that one yet.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay, yeah, I, because we didn't have sound earlier, I was just assuming we were already in that. I'm sorry.
Okay. We'll get you later.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay. Anybody else on Zoom?
I'm sorry, I was having trouble getting the audio, so I, I'm thinking that this is the right one for the living youth ranch. Is that correct?
No, we're still on the zoning case.
Okay, all right. I'll wait.
Okay. Anybody else who would like to speak on zoning case ZON 22-0004? It appears that we don't have any, so no rebuttal unless you want to add anything more.
Unless you have any questions, I feel that we've represented our case.
Okay, fine, thank you. Then that concludes the hearing for ZON 22-0004. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And I got, hi. Yeah. Okay. Do you have the 10 people who have donated their time, their sheets attached? I assume they still have them, yes, or? Okay. As you can see by the number of people in this room, upstairs and out in the hallway, and probably on Zoom, we will be here until tomorrow at this rate. So, we have a couple of options that I just want to suggest, and this is with regard to CUP 22-0008, all right, which is our next case for this evening. We can take the testimony from the applicant as first presented by staff and then applicant's testimony, and then we can reconvene in a much larger auditorium at the CROCK Center on June 6th for public testimony and rebuttal. I do have to be conscious of staff time because they've already served a full day of work. I don't mind going late. I'm thankful that I see a lot of you have donated time. A lot of you have not. We have heard testimony once on all the issues. I must say, I think this is the largest-sized case file I have ever encountered, and I've been doing this for almost five years now. So I know there's a lot of emotion about this, and I want to allow everybody the time to share their thoughts, but I also want to be respectful. So, I don't think it would be appropriate to start with all the public testimony and then cut it off and reconvene later. So I think we either have to hear it, hear it all tonight, or at another time when we can all be together in a much bigger room.
Tonight.
We're here.
Tonight. Yes. We're here.
Seeing a lot of nods, I'm not seeing any shakes.
Madam Chair, do you have any idea how many people want to speak, either for, opposed or against, so we can have an idea for how many hours we'll be here?
That is a good suggestion. Do you want me to help you?
Can you see how many people you think you have on Zoom?
We've all set a lot of time aside. We'd really like to hear this tonight and get it done.
Agreed.
Agreed.
worth of testimony.
Rather like rock.
It's old.
Right, exactly. Yeah. Yeah.
of denial or were not in support of the application, that you remand this back to community development for further assessment of some of the key points that were raised by the public, staff, as well as agencies with jurisdiction. With that in mind, you had agreed to remand the application back to staff, and we have been working diligently with the applicant as well as a number of members of the public who have stopped by on and off to discuss the project with staff, to understand the case file, and to follow up on a number of issues that did arise through the review process. So with that said, what level of detail would you like me to present for you tonight?
Can you hit the points that staff feels are still keeping you from being able to fully support a recommendation?
Well, I believe that the staff report speaks for itself, but I can elaborate. There's a couple of things that I'd like to point out from the first hearing that we held. Just to remind everybody, the subject property is located between Wolf Lodge and Fourth of July Pass on the north side of I ninety and south of Elder Creek Road. The property consists of seventy-three acres, of which the applicant may consider utilizing twenty acres through the large law exemption to set aside for future residents, leaving fifty-two acres plus or minus for the proposed use. The property is zone rural, and it does allow for this type of facility through a conditional use permit. The point I'd like to make is there was some level of confusion by a few members of the public that perhaps a facility of this request or the request for more or less of a commercial facility would necessitate a zone change. It's inaccurate. That's not the case. The applicant may request a conditional use permit, so I want to clarify that. One of the other points I'd like to point out is that there was a miscalculation with the original proposal, and the facility, the structure and the main structure will be only fourteen thousand square feet. It was a miscalculation that the applicant had notated in their original narrative based on some preliminary drawings that she has been working with her design professional on. So I want to clarify, it's not a change in the project, it's not a change in intensity, it's just a clarification of an error that occurred. During the first agency comment period, you can see on the slide before you, there were a number of comments that were submitted. Unfortunately, the comment from the Sheriff's Department was very late. I'd like to admit that perhaps staff made an error and we didn't solicit comments originally, which in the past, the Sheriff's Office has not responded to many land use applications. You probably know this from experience, that they have only recently became interested in a variety of different conditional use permit requests, not just this one. So to point out during the second or following the public hearing on October twentieth, staff did not solicit any additional comments from agencies. However, we did receive two follow-up comments. One was from Idaho Department of Health and Welfare, and they did want to clarify some of the comments that were made by Ms. Scott at the hearing on October twentieth. And the second comment we received was clarification on some stats in terms of response times from the Sheriff's Office, as well as the latest comment to say that they had no additional comments to add to the original ones that were submitted in October of last year. During the first public comment period, we received ninety-seven comments in opposition. There were no public comments that were submitted into the record that were in support, but there were a number of comments in support of the application at the last hearing, if you recall.
Right.
A number of the concerns were raised with respect to vehicular traffic, inadequate security, runaways, trespass, vandalism, property crime, impassable road conditions in the winter months, impact to groundwater supply, limited cellular coverage in case of an emergency, and remote location of the property and delayed response times as suggested by the Sheriff's Office. I do want to clarify that when staff posted the property for this hearing tonight, this was done at the end of last month, when we had, we snowed, we had quite a bit of snow on that day. I posted the property personally, I don't remember the date, but I do want to say for the record that the road leading to the property, Elder Creek Road, was plowed and it was accessible. I did have to drive very slowly, but I want to clarify that it is accessible on the record. The other point I'd like to make is that while I did not have cellular coverage right near the approach to the property itself, heading approximately two hundred fifty to three hundred feet west on Elder Creek Road towards Wolf Lodge Bay, I did get a signal and I was able to make a phone call. So there is limited cellular coverage, and I will let Ms. Scott elaborate on that in her presentation, because she did say that she wanted to clarify in terms of some of the concerns that were raised with respect to the cellular coverage issue. During the second public comment period, we received an overwhelming amount of comments. In fact, on the last day of the public comment period, which was not this Monday, but Monday of last week, we received close to four hundred or maybe even five hundred comments in the span of about twenty-four hours, right before the closing period for public comment. Of those comments, there were ninety-eight people in support of the application, one was neutral, there were three hundred and seventy-one comments that were in opposition, citing concerns that were similar in the first request. I don't think the comments were much different. I think the overarching issue, as was stated in staff's analysis on remand, was of course the potential physical breach of security, as well as runaways and potential vandalism, property crimes on adjoining parcels of land. I'd like to elaborate for the public who may have not had the chance to read the staff report, our main concern is not just with the comments from the Sheriff's Office. Our main concern is the fact that through numerous communication with our building division, the applicant's desire is to have the facility remain as a, from an occupancy standpoint, not from a land use standpoint, but from an occupancy standpoint through the building permit process, as a residential structure, meaning that it will be, it will have self-preservation where the children or the residents will be allowed to leave their rooms and freely roam around the facility, as well as potentially outside. Because this is not an institutionalized facility like a detention center or any other facility that would have specific physical features on site like locks and so forth, the applicant did acknowledge that they would have extensive security cameras as well as drones outside, and we understand that. But because there's not going to be that physical security of residents being locked in, I think the issue still remains with respect to potential breach of security. And moreover, the overarching or the overwhelming number of public comments were related to the same issue. It was with respect to security and compatibility concerns of the proposed use with the surrounding large parcels with limited residential developments. There's very sparse development in the immediate area, but of course, there are a number of residents that reside in Wolf Lodge area. So in a nutshell, while we believe and we want to commit, or we feel that the applicant is doing a noble cause of proposing such a facility to treat troubled youth, it's very difficult for us to support an application with the preponderance of opposition, and therefore, we can't support it this time. I stand for any additional questions that you have for me.
I don't have any for you right now, Vlad, thanks. Okay. Then Jennifer?
Do you need my name and address?
Yes, please.
Okay, my name is Jennifer Scott, address three-two-two-six East Lebo Court in Hayden, Idaho. All right, first I wanted to start, first I wanted to start by just saying that we really have taken the past four months to meet with people, to gather statistics and data, and our hope tonight is to bring some of the evidence, if you will, to support some of the concerns. So we are really hoping to mitigate a lot of the concerns and just the fears that exist in the community right now. And so I'm going to start by just reading and responding to what the staff report indicates, and then I'll move over into some of the other items. So Section One was dealing with compatibility with the existing homes and the businesses in the neighborhood and with the natural characteristics of the area. And I just really wanted to point out that it is seventy-three acres, primarily consisting of timberland, which acts as a natural buffer between any of the adjacent parcels. And as Vlad had mentioned, it is very sparsely populated out there. They had talked about just the primary use encompassing a combination of all three of the criteria that was listed above, so the residential, the agricultural, and the recreational piece. And in a typical twenty-four hour day, the therapeutic component is relatively ancillary to what our primary use will be, which falls squarely in our estimation within the characteristics of the surrounding parcels. The time slot for the formal therapy by licensed professionals is about one and a half to two hours per day, and we had submitted a sample schedule, so that's available for view. The agricultural piece, by definition, is cultivating soil to raise crops and raising livestock. We will be doing both, including preserving the natural habitat, protecting existing vegetation, managing soil conditions in gardens, and timber management. The residential, we will have a family-style living that includes just gardening and homeschooling, devotional time, relaxing, eating, sleeping, indoor-outdoor chores, connecting, and building quality relationships. And then the recreational component, and this is a very large component of what our program will be, just includes a lot of outdoor activities, such as hiking and, you know, things of that nature, that really getting them unplugged and out of their existing environment where they have a chance to really reset. The ways that we will mitigate these concerns are we will preserve the natural characteristics of the land by leaving about eighty to ninety percent or greater in its natural and undisturbed state. And our residential facility will blend in with the natural environment with a low-profile structure. It's going to be below the tree line, the colors are going to be neutral, so it will very much blend in with the natural surroundings. And then we do plan to remain a large acre parcel if approved for the C U P. And then I did include some exhibits for that, so the exhibit one was the sample schedule. Section Two was addressing the negative environmental, social, and economic impact, and later Jeff is going to address the economic impact, so I'm just going to leave that piece. But as far as the environmental, I do have a letter that I'd like to submit into evidence, and I will do that in a moment, from an Idaho-certified installer. And so he talks about the mitigation of the damage, that there are options in that letter, so I will submit that. Let's see here. As far as our response to this, the residents are not permitted to leave the residence without staff escort, and they're not permitted to walk around the property without staff escort. They will be accompanied by staff at all times when they're outside the facility, and there are no exceptions to this, that is our policy. We have also submitted into evidence the two years of incident reports from Boise County Sheriff that were specific to Project Patch, which is the residential care facility out of Garden Valley that we are modeling our program after. And you will see that there were no incidents of harm to the community or property crimes or anything of that nature, and they have been in existence since nineteen eighty-four. And I do have a letter from Chuck Hagley, the CEO, that I will be submitting into evidence as well. So the security and safety mitigation, we will assess for program appropriateness, and I'll get into that in another segment. We are also bound by what's called IDAPA code, so a lot of the concerns are naturally going to be addressed when we get licensed as a residential care facility, and this is the size of the packet that has all of the state's requirements of us, and there is no way around that. So we're already bound to have incredible safety measures.
The time slot for the formal therapy by licensed professionals is about one and a half to two hours per day. And we had submitted a sample schedule, so that's available for view. The agricultural piece, by definition, is cultivating soil to raise crops and raising livestock. We will be doing both, including preserving the natural habitat, protecting existing vegetation, managing soil conditions in gardens, and timber management. The residential, we will have a family-style living that includes just gardening and homeschooling, devotional time relaxing, eating, sleeping, indoor-outdoor chores, connecting, and building quality relationships. And then the recreational component, and this is a very large component of what our program will be, just includes a lot of outdoor activities, such as hiking and, you know, things of that nature, that really getting them unplugged and out of their existing environment where they have a chance to really reset. The ways that we will mitigate these concerns are we will preserve the natural characteristics of the land by leaving about 80 to 90% or greater in its natural and undisturbed state. And our residential facility will blend in with the natural environment with a low-profile structure. It's going to be below the tree line. The colors are going to be neutral, so it will very much blend in with the natural surroundings. And then we do plan to remain a large acre parcel, if approved, for the CUP. And then, I did include some exhibits for that. So, the exhibit one was the sample schedule. Section two was addressing the negative environmental, social, and economic impact. And later, Jeff is going to address the economic impact, so I'm just going to leave that piece. But as far as the environmental, I do have a letter that I'd like to submit into evidence, and I will do that in a moment, from an Idaho-certified installer. And so, he talks about the mitigation of the damage, that there are options in that letter, so I will submit that. Let's see here. As far as our response to this, the residents are not permitted to leave the residence without staff escort, and they're not permitted to walk around the property without staff escort. They will be accompanied by staff at all times when they're outside the facility, and there are no exceptions to this. That is our policy. We have also submitted into evidence the two years of incident reports from Boise County Sheriff that were specific to Project Patch, which is the residential care facility out of Garden Valley that we are modeling our program after. And you will see that there were no incidents of harm to the community or property crimes or anything of that nature. And they have been in existence since 1984. And I do have a letter from Chuck Hagley, the CEO, that I will be submitting into evidence as well. So, the security and safety mitigation, we will assess for program appropriateness, and I'll get into that in another segment. We are also bound by what's called IDAPA code. So, a lot of the concerns are naturally going to be addressed when we get licensed as a residential care facility. And this is the size of the packet that has all of the state's requirements of us, and there is no way around that. So, we're already bound to have incredible safety measures, which we plan to do anyhow. By law, parents will be informed of the risks that exist, and that is part of the IDAPA code. We have to have the informed consent piece where the parents sign off. They are going to be entering into a facility that is in a rural location. There is wildlife, things of that nature. The children will be educated as well regarding all of the potential risks during the orientation process that will take place. As Vlad had mentioned, we will have security cameras and two-way radios that'll be utilized for staff communication and just kind of keeping an eye on things. We will also be using a professional security firm that'll be hired, and will train our organization. We've been in communication with them already. It's PSTI. And I had submitted their letter into evidence, and they work with other children's residential care facilities, law enforcement agencies, hospitals, and things of that nature where risk is a little bit higher, and they train the staff accordingly. And then, the state of Idaho had also recommended the TBRi training, which all of our therapists will be trained in, as well as the other staff within the organization. And I had submitted that into evidence for your review as to what TBRi actually is. We will have low staff and resident ratios. The program will be highly structured with schedules, and then just excellent policies and procedures. And I did end up getting several letters from others, like Dan English, who was the founder of Anchor House, and just other people in the area. So, Project Patch, UGM, different places that really just talked about no incidents of crime ever, no incidents of harm to the community because their programs are well-structured and the policies are in place. Let's see here. As far as the environmental impact, I will submit into evidence that installer. But addressing the concerns raised by the neighbors with regard to roads, traffic, security, and the economic impact, that's another section. So, the road mitigation, we will have a high-quality professional-grade equipment to maintain our driveway and Alder Creek to the facility, from Alder Creek to the facility. And so, it'll be like trucks with hydraulic equipment, tractors, and other necessary equipment to make sure that that road is maintained. On bad weather days, employees will receive park-and-ride type service with an experienced driver and a safe four-wheel-drive vehicle, such as a Suburban that has the ability to transport about seven employees at a time. And then, staff will be prepared by being encouraged to carry emergency blankets and supplies in their car and allowing adequate time to get to work, et cetera. And staff housing will be available for those who desire to stay. We're going to have little cabins on the property, so in the event that there's a significant weather event or something of that nature, they have the ability to stay. And then, traffic mitigation. According to Eastside Highway District, the traffic generated by our facility doesn't even meet the threshold to warrant a traffic impact study. The threshold was 50, and he said we are well below that, so they weren't even concerned about the traffic generated. But what will we do to mitigate that? Deliveries are going to largely go to our administrative office in Hayden whenever possible. And then, kitchen staff will do the grocery shopping in town. We will not be having delivery trucks going up and down the road, as previously suggested, so we're going to do our absolute best to keep as many vehicles off the road as possible. We will avoid employee shift changes at peak hours, like when people are going to school, children are going to school, or people are going to work. And then, parents and visitors do not have an open invitation to come up to the property whenever they wish, but we will have scheduled weekends that they can come, but it's not going to be every weekend. We will keep traffic well below the Eastside Highway District threshold. As far as the economic impact, Jeff is going to address that in a separate section. And then, section three in the staff report is having to do with services and facilities, making sure that they're available and adequate. The rural nature of our subject property is necessary for our intended use. Let's see. An area where services and facilities are more readily available belies the property's physical characteristics to meet these needs. So essentially, we need to be outward requesting to do what we need to do. Cell coverage, as Vlad had mentioned, we did end up getting some video of that, and there is cell coverage. But in order to improve that cell service, there are options that are available, like WeBoost and Starlink, sat phones that operate in any type of an adverse weather condition. And so, I submitted some exhibits, like from Homeland Security and different places like that, that talk about the use of sat phones in adverse weather and just being in incredibly remote locations. So, those will work at any time. With regard to emergency response times, our residential care facility is by choice, out there by choice. We chose rural. We need to have that wilderness environment, and there really is no practical way for us to get any closer to town. So, that is the reason why we believe that it's the most ideal location for us. And then, compared to other residential care facilities across the nation, Wolf Lodge is much closer to emergency services than most other residential care facilities. And Vlad, I don't know if you have those maps. You said you could put those up on just the travel time from like Idaho City to Garden Valley for Patch, and then the one for Tennessee.
Do you recall what you said that that was?
Yes. It would have been, let's see here, 2C and 2D.
Under 8, under 816?
Um... And if you don't have access to those right now, we can wait on that. Yeah, it was 2A, 2B, 2C, and 2D were the Google Maps. So, that'll, that gives you an idea of different facilities. So, that's 2A. Can you go to 2B? Is that? Okay. And then, 2C. So, that's the one in Nunley, Tennessee. So, that's about almost an hour away. And then, Project Patch, the next one, is about an hour away as well. So, a lot, a lot closer from emergency services locally here to Wolf Lodge, about half the time. As far as security is concerned, or safety, rather, is concerned. There was some, you know, question about that. I did submit into evidence the life-flight information, and we have the ability to have an individual, as well as a group, contract with them. We've already got all of the details of that worked out, so those are already submitted in as exhibits. And then, section four was conflict with the comprehensive plan, and we have somebody that will be speaking on this further in our closing. And then, let's see here. Essentially, let me look at this next piece here. So, I wanted to jump over into the definition of residential care facilities, as well as what constitutes a disability, the definition of disability. Because previously, questions were raised regarding whether or not Living Water Youth Ranch was skirting the definition of a disability and trying to fit in as a residential care classification. I just wanted to state that when we originally had our preliminary meeting with community development, they ended up classifying us as a residential care facility. When we had learned about the concerns of the community, we attempted to implement a safety and security system, which would have been the FOB keys, for the sole purpose of trying to make sure that the community felt safe. We had no idea that this was going to kick us into an institutional classification. And so, Vlad had contacted me and said, "You may want to take a look at this because I don't think that that was your goal." So, that was the reason why we had decided not to use FOB keys. We did have people question, you know, us flip-flopping and whether or not they can trust us. That wasn't our choice, that we received that residential classification by the county. That wasn't something that we were trying to fit into, and we actually do meet the actual definition of a children's residential care facility. So, let's start with the county code. A residential care facility is nine or more unrelated elderly persons or persons with disability, or where they reside, generally on a long-term basis, and receive onsite supervision in connection with their disability or age-related infirmity. The facility may also provide short-term rehabilitation services. And this code was misrepresented in a letter stating that our children really belonged more in like a convalescent-type care, and that's not accurate. So, what is a children's residential care facility? According to the state of Idaho, and this is IDAPA code, a children's residential care facility provides treatment for behavioral and emotional challenges, mental illness, substance use, delays in development, and other special needs that require treatment and supervision in a residential setting. And again, that is out of the IDAPA code, 16.06.02, section 010. So, Living Water Youth Ranch does meet the definition of residential care criteria, and that makes us one of the qualifying organizations that can apply for a conditional use permit. So, definition of disability by the Americans with Disabilities Act. The Americans with Disabilities Act defines disability as a physical or mental health impairment that substantially limits one or more major life's activities. A disabled person has a documented history of such impairment, or the person is perceived by others as having an impairment. An example of a disability. So, attention deficit hyperactivity disorder is a disability that substantially limits one or more major life's activities, and it is protected by the Americans with Disabilities Act. And for those who are unaware, it affects how the brain concentrates. And it is one of those unseen disabilities that is, you know, neurocognitive in nature. So, in the last hearing, people had talked about disabilities being more physical in nature. They are mental, emotional, and behavioral as well. The CDC's definition of disability, any condition or impairment of the body or mind that makes it more difficult for the person to do certain activities or to interact in the world around them. And that really is going to be a large portion of the population that we serve. And then, the social security, we listed that as their definition of disability being neurocognitive disorders, anxiety and OCD, depressive and intellectual disorders, developmental, which is more deficits in age-appropriate skills, and then, trauma and stress-related disorders. And these are going to be, again, the types of challenges of the population that we serve. Some of these are redundant, so I'm going to skip those. I wanted to reemphasize something that I had in the last hearing, which is we are going to have a very thorough screening process, and it is not our plan whatsoever to take anyone who has a violent crime or sex offenses, no high, like, complex psychiatric disorders. And that screening process is going to help us eliminate a lot of the people that really are not suitable for our program, and it's going to help us with appropriate placements. Instruments will be used for that, as well as clinical interview. And our goal is to intervene and provide quality residential treatment prior to these youth making permanent life-altering decisions, but we also want to treat those that are appropriate for our group. Let's see here. Last time, we talked about typical struggles for low-to-moderate-risk youth. I don't know that I need to go over that again. I've touched on that. So, letters from other residential care facilities speaking to the safety concerns and the positive impact of a well-managed program, those were submitted into evidence. If I have time, I might read a couple, but they were from Dan English, who's the founder of Anchor House and Idaho Youth Ranch. John Padula, who is the pastor and founder of Set Apart and Good Samaritan. So, I think somebody's going to be reading his letter on his behalf. Ron Galetti was the former CEO of Oak Grove Institute. Joanne Zajak is the executive director of UGM. Chuck Hagley, the CEO of Project Patch. And the overarching theme in all of these is there were no incidents in the community, no harm done to the community, no crimes committed in the community. And then, we also submitted two years of the Boise County reports, the sheriff's reports, that were specific to Project Patch that further supported. And we talked a little bit about the emergency service concerns. We plan to use the life-flight membership, the sat phones. Medical apparatus and first responders will be onsite to mitigate some of the concerns with emergencies. Safety and security training, we've already talked about that. TBRi, we've already talked about that. I did want to expand on the TBRi in the sense that this is the most well-known curriculum in the world as far as reduction in conflict. And it's used in children's residential care facilities, schools, group treatment facilities, youth camps, juvenile justice programs, homes, law enforcement agencies, and in clinical practice. And again, our staff will be trained in all of those. I want to talk a little bit about our assessment process and how we're going to assess for program appropriateness. So, the first is going to be an intake interview where a counselor will gather a general history and discuss the eligibility criteria. And if there seems to be a good fit for both parties, meaning the parents and our program, a comprehensive admissions process will begin at that point. So, the high-risk, severe, or complex psychiatric profiles are not going to be accepted, and that is a no-compromise part of our policy. So, the admissions includes a section regarding adversity, or adverse history at home, school, and in the community. There will be a comprehensive medical and mental health diagnostic, as well as a criminal background check that will be required. And an intake interview will be conducted by a licensed professional. So, as far as the criminal background check, it'll be a policy of our organization that the parents will sign a release to allow us to gain access to any criminal history that may exist. And if they don't want to sign that, then they're not suitable for our program. We're going to take that very seriously. It will also require two professional referrals. Let's see, and that could be from a school principal, mental health professionals, physicians, things of that nature, so people who are active in the child's life. And then, informed consent, we've already talked about this, the parents will need to sign that. Staffing for Living Water Youth Ranch, the state of Idaho has very strict guidelines regarding our staffing policies. In fact, our ratios are going to exceed the mandates that they will place on us, meaning that it'll, the ratios will be better than the minimums that they require. We also are required by IDAPA code to have a full-time chief administrative officer. Treatment providers will all be master's-level credentialed. Licensed educators will be on staff. First responders and other medical professionals will be on staff, or we may have a volunteer population for some of these. And then, staff-to-resident ratios, again, are dictated by IDAPA code. And there is an exhibit that's been introduced. Transportation of the residents, and this is something that you had asked about in the previous hearing, about dental appointments, medical appointments, things of that nature, that is also outlined in IDAPA code. We have requirements that dictate those types of things. So, we will have licensed and insured staff that will routinely transport residents to offsite appointments when needed. Let's see here. Addressing the professional staffing concerns that were raised last time, over the past year, we had received 11 resumes. It's actually 14 now because we are in the process of hiring another therapist. We received three resumes in the last week, which really demonstrates that there are people in our community, licensed professionals, that are seeking employment. We actually just hired an LPC in December of 2022. Um, we actually just hired an LPC in December of twenty twenty-two. And then typically therapists provide services for about thirty clients per week, some see thirty-five or more. Uh, two therapists can easily serve twenty-four residents, and um, Living Water Youth Ranch will have four providers. Uh, services will be largely contracted through ascent counseling, and those providers have been with us for five years or greater, some even longer. We have had other colleagues in the community, though, express interest in running groups and um, doing some of our one-on-ones as well. So we definitely want to open this up to the community if they see fit to serve in that capacity. Let's see. Um, educational tracks, uh, somebody, we, we have a um, we have a licensed teacher and somebody who's worked in administration and education for quite some time that's going to talk on the educational tracks. Uh, but essentially, we have four options, and it will be parental choice. And track one is going to be just your traditional education for diploma. Um, we have a partnership with Bridge Academy that has been submitted, exhibit eighteen. Track two will be homeschool, and this will be from a nationally-recognized curriculum from Liberty University or a university similar. Uh, track three will be a hybrid, which is a combination of traditional and homeschool. And then track four is going to be a GED for those students who may have fallen so far behind that that it would be the best option, and the parent would have the choice for that. Um, I do want to address the inaccurate comparisons to Intercept, and that seems to be um, probably some of the most challenging false narratives that we've had to overcome as uh, an organization. And I can understand why the fear exists in the community if we're being compared to Intercept. I did submit uh, letters. There were four former employees that were able to speak about their experience with Intercept. They spent time talking with me and learning about our program, and I think you will find in those letters that have been submitted into evidence that we are going to be nothing like Intercept. Very different population of people served, very different structure. Um, so Living Water serves a lower-risk population. Uh, we do not admit individuals with complex psychiatric disorders. Uh, we have twenty-four beds in one location, and that's going to be a lot easier to manage in one location. They have houses that are spread out all over the community, which makes it very difficult for staffing and things of that nature. And then Living Water employs professional safety consultants to train staff, and you'll find in some of those letters that were submitted that oftentimes the employees had zero training before they got, you know, thrown into their responsibilities. Um, I have personally met with a handful of former employees, and what I had learned during that time was that they had received lack of training. There was high turnover, it was disorganized, there was poor management. Oftentimes, they had one-to-thirty ratios with the children. I had one person say, Jennifer, if somebody runs, how am I supposed to chase them and leave the other twenty-nine behind? So, I mean, I can see the, the concerns here. Um, and we had somebody share with us, and it's in that letter, that they take the kids that have failed in other programs. So um, I believe that our selection process is going to prove to um, ju- just be much more structured and organized, and we're selecting different children than what Intercept takes. And then we've also had comparisons to Harmony House that are also inaccurate. That is the wrong population, that is not the population that we would serve. So I would just encourage the uh, reading of those former employee letters. Okay. Okay, actually, I'm close to the end anyhow, so that's good. Thank you.
Okay, so that was the end of our applicant testimony. Now we'll move into those who are in favor. I have one with eleven who have donated time.
Can't hear you.
Oh, sorry, thank you. I have one with eleven people who have donated time. So that's a fifteen-minute time slot for Jeff Doty, who's the group representative, and he is representing Marissa McCrery. Do I need to do addresses too, since we have them?
Not addresses.
Okay, Chris McCrery, Cory MacArthur, Tracy Scott. Sorry, Cory Lepard, Jim Doty, Nancy Doty, Kristy Doty, Marcus Anderson, Doreen, Dorene Melton, and Chantel Melton. So Jeff? And just remember, that weird sound is...
Yeah, no.
Yeah.
We, I would have had more time if somebody didn't steal the donation time clipboard at the first CUP.
May I submit these now or later?
Uh, why don't you give them to me now, so that we don't lose track of what we're doing?
Time's actually starting.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
These exhibits will be AG two thousand one.
Thank you.
Uh, Jeff Doty, uh, one-two-zero-four-eight South Diamond Road in Harrison. Uh, good evening. So um, to start off with, two of the main issues regarding Living Water Youth Ranch from the last CUP hearing. Uh, will property values decrease, and are there legitimate safety concerns? Anyone who takes an honest, objective look at the facts will answer no to both questions. One of the biggest challenges facing our country, our state, and our local community is creating a false narrative to fit a particular agenda. We genuinely understand the high level of community opposition and have no doubt there are a very, a lot of very good people in the Wolf Lodge community. But as a result of the false narratives, it has been extremely difficult to earn support for the project, because you can't rationalize facts with people that base their position on unfounded emotion and fear. We have had overwhelming support for the project from people who have taken the time to learn the facts about Living Water Youth Ranch. A brief history of kind of how this all started. The current property owner, Shane Zaring, responded to a land request for a youth ranch. We met with the three adjacent property owners that would be most affected by this uh, project going in, which uh, would be Dave Spiker, Jill Spiker, Trevor Stone, and Mark Mathis. We explained the project in detail, and none opposed the project at that time. Uh, during an onsite meeting with Mr. Mathis, uh, he stated, "For my own selfish reasons, I'm not crazy about change, because I hunt the US Forest Service. I'm a Christian and a patriot. You should be able to do what you want with your own property. I will not oppose this project, and I am only concerned about the improvement and safety of the shared driveway." On multiple occasions thereafter, Mr. Mathis never changed his position until the first CUP hearing, when we witnessed the honestly all-out attack opposing the project. Uh, we then consulted with Gerald Archer, the Fire Marshal of Vista Utilities, uh, the well dr- a well driller, Horsley Drilling, and multiple road builders, just to check our boxes about development with the site. Everything checked out very well. After support from the immediate, the immediate adjacent property owners, um, who either lived directly across the entrance from Alder Creek Road, which is Trevor Stone, uh, we met with Trevor, and he mentioned he used to work with Intercept, and uh, he seemed very receptive at the time to potentially even help out with the youth ranch and, and be a part of it. He was neutral at the last CUP hearing, hopefully he's still uh, in that, of that same opinion. Um, we also met with the common driveway owners, people that share the common driveway with us, uh, the Spikers and uh, the Mathis family. And received acceptable uh, results, obviously, as I mentioned, from the Fire Marshal, uh, of Vista, the Well Company, and the road builders. As a result of all of that, uh, we put the property under contract on April third, twenty twenty-two. So getting to the surveys that Mr. Mathis turned in, uh, that are on the record. What are you going to do about the twenty-one percent decreased property values? The fact of the ma- matter is, the survey that was turned in had critical lack of context and flat-out incorrect information. Uh, it is easy to come to the conclusion, based on Mr. Mathis's two pages of bullet points that accompanied his surveys, this survey was heavily slanted for a desired outcome. Honestly, as a twenty-three-year real estate agent myself, if I was presented with that survey, I would have answered decrease in property values. I mean, it made no mention of the seventy-three-and-a-half acres, ultra-privacy, you can't see it from the road, things that will, you know, get addressed throughout this hearing, no doubt. Facts regarding uh, Mark's bullet points. US Forest Service, Living Water is not concerned about hearing gunfire from the US Forest Service. We would certainly hope that the people out there hunting and shooting would practice good safety, and know their backdrop, which direction they're shooting, and just operate in a safe manner. The Fire Marshal, let's see here, let me back up. Um, the next one would be access to the facility. Mark Mathis plows thirty-five-hundred feet of driveway with a small four-wheeler. He made mention to me in about a two-hour phone call that I had with him at one point, several weeks ago, that at times, quote, "He is out there for four to five hours trying to manage the driveway with his current setup." You can take that for what you will. At the end of the day, the Fire Marshal has approved driveway access, of course, with conditions. We always knew we were going to have to improve the road, regrade it, add culverts, do turnouts, um, have it professionally managed with the right, you know, commercial-level equipment. This wasn't a surprise to us. Increased traffic. The East Side Highway District has approved the project. My sister talked a little bit about that. Um, it's very traversable. Yes, you're in North Idaho, you have to be careful, things get icy, drive slow. Supporting documentation regarding property value. I have various things that I will turn in to you for record. Uh, my sister mentioned Project Patch in Garden Valley, Idaho, whom again, uh, Living Water Youth Ranch is modeled after. Founded nineteen eighty-four, has never had an incident in the community involving crime of any sort. We've already touched on that. Um, you have a letter of record from Tony Palmiato, who is one of the top-producing agents in Boise County. She supports the project and has stated very clearly, uh, she does not feel that property values will be affected. You can, you probably read that letter already. So the letter from Tony Palmiato. I wanted to find out for myself, you know, we, you hear about Living Water Youth Ranch um, being, you know, compared to Project Patch. I thought, you know, I'd like to just call down there randomly and see what somebody has to say about it. So I decided to call the city clerk. Um, so the, the Crouch is the city in Garden Valley. So Bonnie Horsewood, I leave you a, a phone number if you ever decide to reach out to her. I explained to her who I was, what the call was in regard to, and I said, "I'm sure you're familiar with Project Patch. What we're dealing with up here in North Idaho is decreased property values and safety concerns." She responded with, "We love Project Patch. They are a valued member of the community. They continue to volunteer their time and help local residents, and I have never heard anything regarding problems in the community or decreased property values." Next, uh, which is of, on record already, is the letter from Allison Knapp. Um, she's a local fifty-year resident of North Idaho. She's a licensed agent for many years, she happens to be an appraiser. Uh, you have that of record already as far as her support and her opinion on property values. A new one that I will be turning in, uh, here shortly. A letter from Lisa Biondo, uh, who's a real estate agent at Wintermere. Uh, she has a native, is a native of the area, fifteen years in real estate. She's very familiar with the Blue Creek Wolf Lodge area. She has family who lives three houses up, um, from the three group homes on Blue Creek Road. Let me find my place here. Um, she does not feel property values will be affected, you'll have that. So Janelle Barber, who uh, gave us permission to share her full support of the project. She's a native of seventy, seventy-eight years, a retired local school teacher from District Two-seventy-one. She grew up in the Blue Creek Wolf Lodge area. Janelle has carefully reviewed our program, our location, and location, and does not think the community will be negatively impacted in any way, property values, safety. Paul Acker, uh, who lives across from the group home, three group homes. I have his permission to speak to this. Uh, he's in full support of the project, has reviewed all the information that we've presented to you, the program, the location, um, the staffing, all the detail. He does not feel property values will decrease or safety will be an issue. Uh, Living Water Youth Ranch has had several other Blue Creek Wolf Lodge residents show varying levels of support for the project, but due to the false narrative opposition, they do not feel comfortable with a public display of support. There's a handful of people that simply won't speak out about this, that live in that area. The fact of the matter is actually pretty simple. There is no actual data that shows property values will decrease, especially when you're in the middle of seventy-three-and-a-half acres, and you can't be seen from the road, you can't, you're not going to barely hear it. There are hundreds of reasons why a buyer may choose not to live in a particular location. As far as uh, the zoning, which Jennifer touched on a little bit. The CUP zoning, you know, um, so obviously, uh, five acres or more, requiring a conditional use permit. These range from airstrips to restricted surface mining to junkyards. Uh, they include very similar uses, such as childcare centers, schools, head-start facilities, boarding stables, equine facilities, places of worship, residential, residential care facilities, resort lodges, retreat centers, guest ranches, special event locations. We, we, we fit into a lot of those. Uh, Jennifer touched on that, so I'll, I'll leave that alone. Um, and again, as a result of the false narratives, it has been extremely difficult to earn support for this project, because you can't rationalize facts with people that base their opinion on emotion and fear. We have had an overwhelming support for the project um, from people that have taken the time to learn the facts about Living Water Youth Ranch. We truly believe we have addressed all the issues and meet the requirements for CUP approval. I'll turn in a couple of these things for you.
Thank you.
Those will be entered as AG two thousand two?
Um, in regard to the sheriff's, I'll take my last three minutes. In regard to the sheriff's response to this, I mean, it, the damage that was done with the oversight of not soliciting the sheriff. Um, he was in a rush, obviously, didn't really have too much time uh, to look into our program, who we are, what we, what we're about, how it's going to be staffed, all the safety measures that we're going to have in place. I am still in absolute shock, to be honest, um, with, in meeting with Deeks after the first CUP meeting. We met with him for forty-five minutes, explained exactly who we are, what we do, and all these things, and he seemed very receptive. He made the statement that all he has to compare this to is Intercept out in Hayden, which Jennifer touched on, um, a completely different program. And then, you know, puts in there that, you know, we're skirting the definition of residential care facility. Absolutely not true. So with the combination of, you know, that letter, and then Mark Mathis's, "What are you going to do about twenty-one percent reduction in property?" and then Mark Mathis's, what are you going to do about 21% reduction in property value, which kind of seemed like a threat to me, but you can take that for how you will from the last meeting. Those two absolutely false narratives sent this entire thing on such a bad trajectory. I absolutely see why so many people in the community are up in arms over this whole thing. It's nice to have the opportunity to sit here and speak the truth about what this really is. Hopefully, they listen to this. I mean, we are honestly, will take everything, do everything we possibly can to fit into the community if this gets approved. We will be good neighbors. They will see value in our being there. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Those are those. All right, I have a few. Heidi Herschley says she's in favor but doesn't say whether she's speaking or anything.
I'm speaking.
Okay.
I am going, Heidi Herschley, my address is 8382 North Wayne in Hayden. I am going to read a letter on behalf of John Padula. He is a minister, pastor at my church, and he also has set apart discipleship. Says, "To whom it may concern, I'm writing this letter in support of the Living Water Youth Ranch. I have known Tracy and Jennifer Scott for over 12 years. They have been great friends, and we have watched their ministry grow, and they have seen the heart, we have seen the hearts that they pour into the community. When I heard their vision of Living Water Youth Ranch, it was very encouraging. There is such a need for guidance and direction for the youth in our community. I have been working with Good Samaritan Rehabilitation Center for the last 14 years, since I went through the program myself after 17 years of meth addiction. In 2013, my wife and I started Set Apart Discipleship, which is an inpatient rehabilitation that takes people off of detoxing off of drugs in our community. While people have been in impatient portion of the Good Samaritan or an impatient portion of Set Apart Discipleship, there has been no property crimes, no theft, and no harm to the community that they have been committed, that have been committed by them in the community. I think that there is zero risk for the neighbors around the Living Water Youth Ranch. They will see that in the end it will be a blessing to them. There has been close to 4,000 people that have graduated from the Good Samaritan program, and although all of them do not succeed afterward, a huge portion of them do. If there are people willing to grab a hold of the youth that need us, it will be better for our community as a whole. Also, the structure of Living Water Youth Ranch is going to be very safe. There will be supervised qualified adults, and they will be getting what they need to have a successful life in the future. I think that as a community, we should gather around the staff and help them be successful part of our Cootney County. And what I would like to say is, I have known pastored him for over 20 years, and in Wolf Lodge, Blue Creek, there already is a facility. Those people come out of jail, and there's never been one incident. So already in the community, they have a facility. We're talking at at-risk youth. We're not talking about people who've been in jail or hardened criminals. These are ages 12 to 17, and I think that there's just been a lot of misinformation, and I don't think that the community of Wolf Lodge has embraced us, because, I don't know for whatever reason, but we really do want to be good neighbors to them, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And do you have this letter from John Padula?
It's in our, yeah.
Okay.
And I have Miranda Newell, says in favor but doesn't say whether there's a, okay.
My name's Miranda Newell. I live at 220 West Haycraft Avenue, Coeur d'Alene. I wanted to share just a little bit of my story with you in hopes of shedding a little light on how impactful and life-changing a youth ranch like this could be to our community. My story starts out in a family with a meth addict as a mom and an alcoholic as a father. I was a kid who quickly realized the feelings of hopelessness from abandonment and abuse that I had endured was easily numbed by drugs and alcohol. Fast forward through many years of drug and alcohol abuse, four treatment centers, the Shoshone County Drug Court Program, a few arrests, all in the state's time, I was close to dead. After winding up in the hospital, not once but four times, two of which were from infections from drug use. The doctor told me he was afraid to let me leave because after what he had seen me do to myself, he was absolutely sure he knew I would die. I was broken, suicidal, and did not know where to turn. I went into the UGM program and found, and my life changed forever. Getting to the root of why I was using drugs and alcohol literally saved my life. Therapy, being shown love and kindness for things I didn't know existed. It took time to heal in a safe place where I could get out of the cycle of my old life and start new with tools I still use to this day. Finding my self-worth in God and others that were for me, addressing mental health issues, all of this truly saved my life. Fast forward again to now, do I get to work with kids that experienced the same thing as I did as a child? I advocate for the program that saved my life. I get to tell my story to give others hope in their own lives. The only risk to our community is to ignore the need for this youth ranch and all the possibilities it holds. Why not look at the long game and see that kids in the same situation that I was in need a safe place to heal and to feel worthy of love? Catching and treating drug abuse, mental health issues, teen suicide, and things like bullying and running away before it becomes a way of life for these young people, and then becomes the only way that they know how to cope with life. Let's love on these kids and set them on the path to success in life. Let's help give them a chance. I'm speaking from experience. I got a second chance at life, and I will fight every single day to help someone live out their second chance in life, too. Right now, I work at the Children's Village as a direct care provider. I see these kids coming in at the very lowest points of their lives. Parents dying by drug overdose, sexually abused, abandoned, their behaviors are a cry for help. Let's do the very meaning of what life calls us to do and help one another make this world a better place, one child at a time. We are not asking you guys to do the work. We are just asking you to let us do the work. I see these kids coming into the Children's Village, and some of them we have to turn away because they don't accept boys ages 12 and older, and it's really, really a sad thing. These boys need help, just like the girls do, and there's not very many places at all that take these kids. And in the line of work I have, I just feel so blessed that I get to love on these kids, and and I was one of those kids that would have benefited from something like this when I was young. And I just think Tracy and Jennifer are a blessing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'm not sure I have all my right things. All right, I have Megan Ballard in
Megan Ballard, 12813 East Riva Road, Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. I'm standing here as a Wolf Lodge resident and as a mother in support of this youth ranch, and I would say it kind of boils down to three reasons for me why, why I would love to see this be integrated into our community. I think about my cousin, my friend from high school, both young men who took their lives before the age of 20. I think about the sadness in our community, suicide rates going up, and we all see on the news all the time. I want there to be a resource for children who need that support, that love, and that help. I'm standing for children who don't have anyone else to advocate for them, who need the support and the love. I have a lot of respect for my neighbors who are here, who don't show the same opinion as I do, because they're here with the hope to protect their own children. And I think, from what I've heard today, it's been proven that overall, this is a very safe endeavor for our community, but who's standing for the children who don't have the same love and support that my neighbors are showing their children? And the last reason I'm standing is for my own son. God forbid something ever happened to me and my husband, or something happened to my son, and he was surrounded by darkness and hopelessness. I would hope that there would be a place that could help guide him through the pain that this world has to offer. Very few people in this room are unaware of the pain that the world can dish us out, and I think that the children who would benefit from this are the most vulnerable. So it's with love and support for the next generation coming up that I stand here, and also in memory of people that I love that I've lost. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Doty in favor wishes to speak.
Ready? Julie Doty, 702 North Fourth Street. I'm here in support, I'm very much in support of this project, and I wanted to give a little bit of my background so I can, for whatever it's worth, lend that to you. I've been an attorney for a lot of years. I spent a lot of years prosecuting cases in juvenile court specifically, not just in this state, but in the state of Washington, also in the state of California. When I was in this community, I was in the Cootney County Prosecutor's Office, and I was one of two prosecuting attorneys that handled all of the juvenile prosecutions for the county. This community needs this. I got out of prosecution and started doing family law cases. In family law cases, we deal with a lot of custody cases. In custody cases, there's a lot of devastation that children suffer. Parents do ridiculous things. Their kids are put in ridiculous positions, and they act out, and they need help. There are a lot of them that need help. We do not have resources in our community sufficient to deal with this. Our government agencies do not have resources in our community sufficient to deal with this. It is a blessing that the stars lined up and that people are willing to step forward, like Jennifer and her team, to provide something like this to our, to our community. They're not asking for us to pay for this. They're not asking for us to do the heavy lifting. They're not asking for us to pay for any of the things that they're offering. They're just asking for an opportunity to provide a service that we desperately need. I wanted to speak to something Vlad said. I think, I may have misunderstood him, but at the end of his remarks, he had made a comment before indicating that he could not support or there could not be support for this because of the number of people opposed. To me, it's very shocking that you can walk in, at the last meeting I came here, I spoke, and as I was walking in, there were a couple of people in the parking lot riling people up, calling this a mental institution. We're here to oppose the mental institution. We don't need a mental institution in our community. Just very negative, and very negative influence on the people that were around listening to this. I feel like there've been a lot of very closed-minded people that have not opened up to even listen to what's being presented, to even listen to what's being proposed, and that's unfortunate. I didn't realize that you were in the Wolf Lodge community. I commend her for coming in here and walking through what I walked through to get in here. Looking at just a number opposed, when you have somebody handing out and asking for signatures to try to rile up opposition, let's look at what's being offered. I mean it when I say the stars are lined up that we have this opportunity. It's a miracle that we have this opportunity for our community. Other communities would kill for an opportunity to have a facility come in and do this. And for them to continue to move forward, rather than just pull the plug and walk away from this, in light of the opposition that they have seen, I commend them. I commend them for sitting here. The last meeting that we went through was very, very emotional, and they're still here saying, "Give us this opportunity. Let us do this for this community." I'm very impressed with the plan that was put forward, and I very much appreciate it listening.
Thank you, Julie. Carla Zimmerman, you checked two boxes. You're in favor, you're donating your time, and you wish to speak.
Yes, I wasn't sure if I was going to be part of the presentation, so.
Okay.
So, my name is Carla Zimmerman, 7357 North Bedford Lane, Coeur d'Alene. I am here, after participating in the original hearing back in October, you had left us with some action items that you wanted us to look at. And so I come here addressing the education action item that you proposed, that we look more deeply and credibly at. I'm a 20-year educator, 17 years in educational administration locally, and so we take very seriously how these students are going to be served while they are in the Living Water facility. And so, one of the things we did was we sought opportunity to partner with local educational schools or institutions in which we can serve our students. So as students, and part of the intake that students will go through with Living Water, is looking at where students are at, because we need to look at them holistically. So they're not just coming there because they are in crisis in that moment for their, their social, emotional, or mental need. They are a student. They are between the ages of 12, 13, up through high school age. And so we need, and we have a responsibility to serve their academic and emotional, or sorry, their academic needs as well. So in doing that, each student will be, and their families will be consulted as well, they will be given an opportunity to take one of four tracks toward meeting those academic needs. And in so doing, we have partnered with Cootney Bridge Academy, and there is an exhibit item from Charles, who is the director over there, and that's in, you gave it right. So they have agreed to partner with us. So students that want to receive a traditional diploma track, they will have the opportunity to do that. There is a GED track where we've partnered with Boise State University and NIC pending their challenges. And then also homeschool track for families who are more interested in that. So, students are given an individual learning plan. In, in the public education forum, we have individualized education plans, IEPs, for students that have been identified with special education needs. Some of our students will have those as well. If they're a student with an identified or an individualized education plan, we have an obligation to meet the criteria set forth in that individualized education plan. And in order to do that, there will be a certificated staff member at Living Water who will monitor that and make sure those students' individualized needs are being met either through our facility or the partner school that they are working with. And so we have, we have created a plan so that we can address those needs. And so, just wanted to make sure that, that you're aware that we have taken those action item steps.
Thank you. Patrick MacArthur in favor may wish to speak.
There's a serious delay out there. My name's Patrick MacArthur. I reside at 204 West 14th Avenue, Pulse Falls, Idaho. Now, a lot will be said about people speaking that don't live in the Wolf Lodge area. If I lived in the Wolf Lodge area, I would still be a proponent of this. I'm a fifth-generation North Idaho resident. My family homesteaded North Idaho. There's actually a town named after us. Everybody except is, says that there needs a facility. They just say they don't want it in their backyard. Well, there's a reason we, that the, this site was picked specifically. It's far enough away from town to be away, but still has access to town. A lot was said about the fact that there's no cell service. For some of us, no cell service is a blessing. There will be communication for emergencies and on-site. The snow removal. I have professionally removed snow for 10 years. I'm a 30-year field mechanic as a heavy equipment mechanic. I know how to move dirt. I know how to move snow. I know how to drive in North Idaho. Maintaining this property and maintaining this road will be no problem. The location of this facility on the property, unless you know it's there, you will not know it's there. There's also said about how much water because of the storage facility, storage required for fire suppression. It's a large number, but that number is storage. The amount of water and sewage generated from this facility will be less than if this property was subdivided and sold off in houses. The other thing is, is if this property is subdivided and sold off into lots, the neighborhood will have zero input and zero control over what somebody does will have zero input and zero control over what somebody does on that piece of property. We will be under strict guidelines, what we can and what we cannot do as a residential care facility. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Danielle Cap in favor wishes to speak.
Danielle Cap, 347 Songbird Way in Spirit Lake, Idaho. I am a nurse, registered nurse here in Cootney County, I've been a nurse for 17 years, have a background in mental health and behavioral health. And it's very easy here in North Idaho to brush, brush aside the statistics from the National Institute of Mental Health in 2020 that says that 4.1 million adolescents and youth have had at least one incident of major depressive episodes. You break that down into Cootney County, where our population as of July of 2021 was 180,000 people, 26, 22% of those are 18 years and, and younger. That all being said, Idaho is the fifth, has the fifth highest suicide rate in the United States as of 2020, and has the ninth highest rate of major depressive episodes among their adolescents. As a nurse in behavioral health and mental health, I have had the unfortunate opportunity of having to try to place adolescent youth in residential facilities across the United States because we do not have facilities here that can provide those services for our youth. When, when we have to treat kids at a lower intensity of care that require higher intensity of care, it's a barrier to them getting well. Having to send them to other states such as Tennessee inhibits the fact that the family can no longer be part of their care plan and their care team. As a mother, I would want this for my child, and I see a lot of children here today that are young, that by the grace of God, aren't, are not having to deal with some of the issues that our adolescents are dealing with. But I will tell you, there may come a day when those children have to deal with these issues, and these parents that are opposed are going to wish that they had a facility in their backyard that is being run by the amazing people that are putting this project together. Because as like with anything, you can turn a blind eye until it hits your family, and then all of a sudden, you want what you, what you said you didn't want. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. David Spiker in favor wishes to speak.
David Spiker, 2864 South Evergreen Lane, Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. If you look at the map, I'm probably the most impacted of anybody. Take that yellow line on the right side, that's me on the right, 98 acres.
Can you scoot closer?
To the mic.
Oh, is this the? The, the yellow line, I'm on the right. I have 98 acres of my wife and I. I once owned this property that this is proposed to be built on, sold it to actually Shane. And just to clean up a few things, my wife and I are both for this project, for several And I want to go through, actually, on my property, about a quarter mile from this site, is a brand-new cell tower being built right now. They put all the electrical conduit in last, late last fall, and the construction is to be done this summer. So there will be a cell tower within a quarter mile because 4th of July passes, got the most accidents in I-90 in the whole country with no cell service, and they've been trying to put one up there forever. And they finally came and talked to me, and so I, I said, "Yeah, let's do it," because I like to help people. The thing that, I did a lot of homework on this, but I have a very good friend who's a subcontractor of mine for over 25 years. His daughter went to a similar program, just like this, 12 years ago. She suffered from severe depressions, she was 17-years-old, had no place to go except to Montana. So, she went there, she spent like six months there, and 12 years later, she's got a full life. She did attempt suicide twice before she went there. Thank God it failed, and she now lives in Phoenix, Arizona. Some of the other things, water, off the west side of this, there's big spring. I see water everywhere. I know of three springs on my property, so I'm not concerned about water access. The fence, that's talking about security, I asked them, when I talked to them, I don't want a fence that separates us, because I don't see the impact, I don't see the problem. Because of the staff and how easily, you know, the ratio between staff and customer or client. My biggest problem, since I've owned this up here, has been trespassers during hunting season. I mean, I've had elk killed on my property three times in the last seven years. And I just, I really admire people that will actually go through and, and supply this, because Cootney County needs this. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Jackson Lanternman in favor wishes to speak.
Yes, ma'am. Jackson Lanternman, 8395 North Scottsworth Street, Post Falls. I am the Director of Juvenile Justice Outreach, a local faith-based nonprofit, and I'm also the lead chaplain at the Juvenile Detention Center here in Coeur d'Alene. I work with the youth that have gotten into trouble, and I visit them at the Juvenile Detention Center. I also work with the youth that are not quite there yet, that are on the way there. And I've been getting phone calls and emails and referrals from parents in our community who are concerned about their kids. Their kids are expressing behaviors they never have before, it's not gotten to a place where they would be approaching the juvenile justice system. But as our community grows, we can look around and we can see that the issues we're seeing amongst our young people are only going to grow. And I will echo what others have said about our community severely lacking the resources in order to take care of these kids. The federal government is making a push right now to do more preventative care for our kids, and the Living Water Youth Ranch could be an incredibly valuable part of that. I would much rather have the Living Water Youth Ranch come in and do this work with our kids, for our community, than to have some other outside organization, or God forbid, the government itself, come in and do it for us. These are our community members here stepping up and saying, "Look, we see the need." The, the waiting lists for counselors are a mile long, and my organization routinely pays for counseling for these kids. I know how long these waiting lists are. There are dozen, I, I don't, can't put, even put a number on it, of the number of kids that could take advantage of Living Water Youth Ranch. I'd also like to speak to the, the importance of the wilderness location for this facility. Talk therapy does not work for many, many folks. You can't sit in an office and always get the help that you need. There's a reason why programs like equine therapy make a massive difference in the lives of young and old people alike. You get them out of the city, you get them out of their normal environment, and you put them in a situation where they can experience something new and different and have a brand-new perspective on their life. I think that is an incredibly important aspect of what we're talking about here today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Betsy Spitzer in favor wishes to speak.
I'm Betsy Spitzer, 1548 North Glasgow Drive, Post Falls. I am a mom of five, one who really needed this kind of program, and it, it saved his life. He was in and out of the juvenile justice system and would have continued doing that, and has now got quite a bit of clean and sober time under his belt. I know that's not the only kind of rehabilitation that they plan on doing at Living Water, but these kind of programs are so valuable. And we had, we have five kids, we raise them all the same, we have a healthy, loving home. I've worked at UGM, I've participated and led recovery groups, and for whatever reason, some kids need that little extra help, you know? Sometimes it's kids that are in homes where they don't have what they need. In our situation, our son had what he needed, but there were, it was one of those situations, like Jackson said, where our kid was all of a sudden doing all these things that we were just like, "What?" You know? He needed it, he needed it, and he got the help he needed. I have housed family members' children because there was no place for them to go. We've had nieces and nephews in and out of our house because there's no place for them to go. This is so important, something like this is so important for kids to have. I have, I have had firsthand experience how people who have received the rehabilitation that they need, Miranda would be an excellent, Miranda up here, talking an excellent example of somebody who then pays it forward. The good repercussions from something like this have the potential to reach so many people, even if everyone who went through it talked to two people or helped two people, but oftentimes they go on to do things like work at Children's Village and help countless people. So if every person that went through there passed that on, and then they passed it on, and then they passed it on, this has the potential to do so much good that far outweighs any kind of, any negativity, negative impact that I've heard about here, in my humble opinion. I have, I have nothing but good to say about this idea of Living Water Youth Ranch. I have nothing but positivity that it's gonna be a great, great thing for every life that it touches. And I, I personally have a lot of experience with working with Jennifer Scott on different things, and have seen countless lives changed by her and her colleagues, so.
Thank you. All right, that's all of the ones that I have that are in favor. Do we want to do in favors on Zoom and then take a quick break?
Anyone on Zoom, pardon, I didn't have my mic on. Anyone on Zoom that would like to speak in favor of this project, please unmute yourself Apparently not.
Okay, then, five-minute break? Okay, then, five-minute break? I need quiet in the room! Quiet in the room! All right, I understand that we had run out of comment sheet forms and there are two more people, one whom wishes to speak, who's in favor. And that's Brian Doniger.
Brian Doniger, 2126 West Lappaway Avenue, Post Falls. Thank you for letting me come up and speak. I just want to say, I'm an assistant chaplain, work with Jackson at the JDC. I'm also a foster parent of six years. I have adopted three children and in the process of adopting the fourth. This youth ranch is a good idea for this reason, doing foster care, these kids come out of broken homes with trauma and all that. And when they get pulled out of that environment and surrounded with that constant care and constant attention, it really changes their life. Proof in fact, my son, who is now 22, when he came into our care, he was 13, came out of the jail, I don't know why I'm nervous, do this for a living, came out of jail and was on probation, 24-hour supervision, got into our care and we were able to love him and care for him like this ranch would for these kids. He graduated high school and now he's in college to become a therapist. It changed his life. My daughter also came into our care, was in a lot of trouble, and was on the road to going to jail. But because she got that constant care, that constant love, she is now an A B student, ready to get her driver's license, and wants to become a veterinarian. Our latest daughter, who we are about to adopt, also came out of the JDC. And just in the short time that she's been with us, she hasn't been in any trouble, she's doing well in school, getting Bs and Cs, about ready to get her driver's permit, and when she graduates, she wants to become a correctional officer. This type of place will give hope to these kids that have no hope. Now, the kids that we take are high-risk. The kids that they're gonna take are low-risk. They get them before they go into jail, they get them so they have that inspiration to do well into the community. And so I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you. And there is Terry Doniger too, who is in favor but does not wish to speak. And I also found on my desk an applicant representative who wishes to speak, but you're gonna have to do that during rebuttal, okay?
I think he wrote it on there that he wants to do it at rebuttal.
Okay. I couldn't read that. All right. I have a few mysteries. I have Dan Capes, who's opposed, but it doesn't say whether you want to speak or what.
What's his name?
I also have Leel Capes, who says opposed, and I don't know what. And I have Lorraine Burton.
I'm definitely against.
Did you want to speak?
I didn't put my name down to speak, but I can say a few words if you want me to.
Well, if you... It's up to you, but if someone else is gonna be representing your thoughts and concerns already, then we don't need to duplicate.
I'm gonna say that somebody else is probably gonna do a better job.
Okay, thank you. And I have Tim Van Lahooten. I'm sorry. And it says, check donating time, but it doesn't say opposed or in favor. Were you opposed or in favor?
Opposed.
Okay. And it says you were donating your time, okay. And did we find the Capes?
That was the Cape, the other gentleman that stood here.
Oh, well, that...
That was Dan Capes that said.
Okay. And what about Tim Van Lahooten?
That was the gentleman that said donating his time and he was opposed.
Okay. Now I'm confused, so what was the Capes? They were here?
Yeah.
The gentleman just stood here and said he was opposed and he would not talk, someone's gonna say better than him.
Okay, I might have looked down and not realized two different people.
That's the first job.
Okay.
And then the other job, Mr. Tam, who just came in and said he was opposed and donating his time.
Okay. Got it. Yeah, yeah. But I still don't know about Lorraine Burton.
Is there a Lorraine Burke now there? Twenty minutes old Lorraine Burke? Is she opposed or for? This is her husband.
No, that's my sister.
Sister, yes.
She's not here, she's not here.
Opposed.
She's opposed.
Okay.
Is she donating her time?
And donating. Donating time, okay.
She needs to be present to donate her time.
Okay, so we have Armando Alderetti, opposed, does not wish to speak. Cody Barton, opposed, does not wish to speak. Zoe Capes Barton, opposed, does not wish to speak. Thomas Sower, opposed, does not wish to speak. Teresa Sower, opposed, does not wish to speak. Andy Ost, opposed, does not wish to speak. John Paul Sower, opposed, does not wish to speak. Owen Ost, opposed, does not wish to speak. Dirk Osk, opposed, does not wish to speak. Heather Coy, opposed, may wish to speak.
She donated her time. Opposed.
Okay. Teresa Wilson, opposed, does not wish to speak. Noel Wilson, opposed, does not wish to speak. Jessica Flynn, opposed, does not wish to speak. Andrew Flynn, opposed, does not wish to speak. Just checking. All right, I'm going to then do those who donated their time to the groups. And I'm gonna leave the opposed who may wish to speak to afterwards in case nobody else said what they need to say. Okay, Ruth York, who has 10 people. Ken Fisher, Michael De Pasqual, Dane Ost, Melody Burns, Joel Rose, Blake Ost, Barbara Hansen, Myrna Rasmussen, Ronan Burns, and Ruth York.
And Ruth is on Zoom.
Okay.
Ms. York, if you'd like to...
Oh, yes. Thank you very much. My name is Ruth York, I'm with you, Beth Ann. I am the executive director of an organization that is statewide and is called Families and Youth of Idaho. It's been in Idaho for many years. We're headquartered in Boise at 704 North Seventh Street, 83702. I'm writing to share concerns, speaking to share concerns over the Living Water Youth Ranch that is proposed in your county. I am not opposed to all residential centers by any means. I have placed a child of my own in a residential treatment center previously. As this hearing is focused on land use approval, I will focus my comments there. I am personally familiar with many, many residential centers in the United States that are unable to keep youth safe, treat them appropriately, and produce successful, long-term, or even short-term outcomes for these youths. So I've spent a lot of time with the information presented publicly to date about Living Water Youth Ranch. I want good treatment options in Idaho. That is the whole basis of the work that I do. It should include some quality residential centers. They are needed for a small number of youths who have significant emotional and behavioral disorders of a complex nature. They need to be used sparingly and quickly because a residential setting will induce more trauma and behavioral issues upon a population of kids who are not well-suited to it. So many people think these centers are the answer, but there's so much inherent risk in these programs that is not known or being acknowledged here. Governor Little offered $15 million last summer through Idaho's Health and Welfare Department to create three new residential treatment centers in Idaho. Those are treatment centers that will meet, they are for youths who will meet the treatment criteria for this residential level of service. So there is an effort being made in Idaho to help the small population of intensive needs youth that qualify for a residential option. Residential care is not the best practice standard for the majority of struggling youths. We don't know what to do with struggling youths, and we don't see any other options around us, so we think we need to send our kids away to change. Youth at risk of poor outcomes and their families, wherever possible, need to learn to manage their risks, not to be isolated from all risks in a remote location. Living Waters is saying they are not taking youths with complex needs, but this is exactly who is therapeutically justified to be admitted to such a residential setting. Ms. Scott mentions they will be accepting youths with milder behaviors such as ADHD. Parents and children need to learn how to live with and manage their ADHD at home and in their communities and schools. ADHD does not justify residential care, and learning to live with your ADHD in a remote ranch setting does not translate back to being able to live with it at home and in their school and community. We do not need to seemingly punish youths and send them away when they are dealing with behaviors resulting from brain-based mental health disorders, especially behaviors on the milder end of the behavioral spectrum. The documented widespread need we have in Idaho, where there remains a huge gap for youth and families, is the community-based services that are intensive in their therapeutic approach, but that allow youths to stay connected to their communities and families while they are receiving adequate treatment and appropriate treatment. This is always best for long-term outcomes. We know this, the data shows this nationally. It is wonderful that the group proposing this project wants to impact at-risk youth, but this needs to be done in the best interest of these youths and their futures. The beauty of Idaho ranch life is that it has a focus on family, and I really call into question using a ranch setting to isolate youth from their families when we should be creating community-based services for the huge majority of mental health disorders. When families cannot spend significant time together throughout the treatment process, learning to share space together successfully and harmoniously, there is absolutely no reason to think that a new family dynamic will be achieved upon the child's return to their home and community. I see this constantly in my work. We do a lot of work helping families reintegrate their child back into their home post-residential treatment, but this fraught with peril. I'm concerned that a remote location like Living Waters is proposing is very problematic for many families who have jobs and other children to juggle as they seek care for their kids, where remote locations definitely negatively impact family involvement in treatment. Finally, on the physical safety side of things, there are many, many documented injuries and some fatal incidents at centers that use remote locations as part of their treatment model. I know that is not true for every center, but we know that such a location is going to have trouble maintaining adequate staffing because that is true at almost all of these programs and across almost all industries in Idaho at this point. And the more isolated the program, frequently, the more they struggle with staffing. I know the residents of Wolf Lodge want to be safe, but I am more concerned that these youths also deserve to be safe. It is a fact at these treatment centers that youths try to run away. They try to hide and find space to be alone when they are overwhelmed. I know that so many runaway situations with some youths found on the campus of the facility, others found in the community, still others found in whole different communities. I don't believe it's a matter of if this will happen, I believe it's a matter of when and how often this will happen. And these kids must be protected from their own bad decisions and instincts when they're at Living Waters. I want to support new mental health facilities and programs that meet the needs I know exist for Idaho children. I see these needs every single day. I do not believe Living Waters is meeting the actual, real need that our youths have. I'm very concerned about the harm that can come to youths when facilities are not appropriate for the youth that they intend to serve. I have seen this close-up, and I am not convinced that Living Waters is an appropriate option in Idaho. Governor Little will be bringing this center to northern Idaho. It is not the only option, and I think we need to focus on centers that fulfill the actual need that is appropriate in a residential setting. That is all my comments, thank you.
Thank you. All right, my next one is Mark Mathies, opposed, and he has a group of 10. Sean Martell, Christopher Jasper, Steve or Stan Funk, Kathy Cozy, Daryl Cozette? Michelle Stone, Trevor Stone, Diana Swanson, Kevin Swanson, and Mark.
Hi, Matt, how are you?
I'm well.
I am Mark Mathis. I live at 17028 East Alber Creek. Just about 15 minutes ago, you would have found me under the bus being drug over multiple times.
So I am against this subsequent, I guess, CUP and the Living Water At-Risk Youth Ranch. And some people have characterized, I'm gonna speak for the Wolf Lodge family in general, that, you know, we are evil, we are mob mentality, we're doing everything we can in a way that means we haven't listened, and that we don't understand what's going on. I would like to suggest that maybe we don't live in fantasy land, but we live in reality. And we've all done some research on maybe what the real world's like and what really goes on in this industry. I would like to say, it's, do I understand mental health issues? I do. I have sent my children to counselors before, and my 21-year-old son committed suicide. So do I think mental health issues are real? Absolutely, I do. But I want to go ahead and talk a little bit about, as Mr. Doty said, I was initially, I wouldn't say for it, but I was probably in the neutral category, because I do think people, if they own land... people, if they own land, you know, they should be able to do, consistent with the zoning, kind of what they want with their land, if they want to build a house or a shop or whatever. So you have somebody like me who was initially neutral, and after doing research and hearing both sides of the argument, not just one pro side, but also hearing the other, I am now against this facility. And I'm going to let you know a little bit why. Living Water Youth Ranch is part of a multi-billion-dollar industry called the troubled teen industry. I have tons of articles and documents that I will submit for you today, and it is, I'm going to just read a few highlights. The troubled teen industry is a term to describe a system of underregulated residential youth facilities. This is a researcher. These programs are also referred to as treatment centers and are infamous for numerous abuse charges. Now, I'm going to say right out front, do I think Jennifer Scott and her team are out to abuse kids? I'm not going to slander somebody. But I will say these facilities, this is the norm in these facilities, according to all these articles. They're sent to these facilities for a myriad of reasons. Parents are often manipulated through fear tactics into believing their children desperately need this type of facility. Introduction to such facilities often include involuntary youth transport, which consists of being woken up in the middle of the night. Physical force is used if the adolescent doesn't comply. The origins of the troubled teen industry can be traced back to the 1958 Colt Synanon. So these are, if you look it up, you'll find all these facts online, and I'm going to have a complete article for you. Readers unfamiliar with this subject, and I would argue a lot of people who hear only one side of the story, hear what we've heard so far. It's all needed. It's great. Everything is awesome. Those familiar with this subject, who are not clients themselves, may be surprised to see centers portrayed in such a good light. They advertise themselves as ideal facilities with pure intentions and proper techniques. The research I completed, the article writer, is a much-needed analysis of the harsh realities behind centers such as this one. I have some more articles. I'll leave them with you. The troubled teen industry is a big business. It receives an estimated $23 billion of annual public funds. Descriptions of experiences in the industry include descriptions of strip searches, physical abuse, sexual abuse, physical, mechanical, and chemical restraint, conversion therapy, lack of appropriate health treatment, including mental health, forbidding communication, and I think you're going to hear a little bit about that, and lack of basic needs like food and water. So I think it's important to see that's the industry, maybe not this specific facility exactly, but that's the industry that they are requesting gets put into the Wolf Lodge area. They have said multiple times, "We are not Intercept. We are modeled after Project Patch." So I just went and got, went on to Yelp, and I'll send you these reviews, just some reviews of Project Patch. "Please do not send your children here. I was a resident as a teen. I am now an adult with my own children, and I can say with confidence that I would never, under any circumstance, place my child in a program like that." Here's one that talks about the wilderness therapy. You know, it sounds great, but this is what they say. Wilderness therapy is awful. Every resident went at some point, usually in the winter. The residents are given a tarp and some logs and are told to make a tent barely big enough to fit them. At night, you sleep in only long johns and a sleeping bag, because if they give you warmer clothes, they'll fear you're going to run away. These are residents of Project Patch. "Project Patch, along with other programs, are abusive and create more trauma. I understand that parents are desperate to help their children, but sending them to a program like this will only deepen and worsen their trauma. Please do your child a favor and research alternatives. The troubled teen industry is corrupt to its core. Your child deserves better." I could just go on and on and on. I'm going to leave all these reviews with you. There was, of course, some good reviews as well. So it's obviously mixed, but it's not like every single person that goes there comes out smelling like a rose. Many do not like it. So let's talk about something we haven't heard mentioned once yet. What do you think the costs of these programs are? I'm not joking. Thousands and thousands of dollars a month, if not tens of thousands of dollars a month for this program. A month. Everybody has said Cootney County needs a facility like this. How many Cootney County families can afford this, do you think? I can guarantee you, there will be plenty of out-of-state residents at this facility. This is a big business. It has lots of big money. And basically, you're going to, they're asking to build a facility in an area of Wolf Lodge residents where we don't want it. It's not for the teens of our county. It's for the teens of rich people who can afford the extravagant costs of these programs. I did have discussions with the applicants, and I told them, I said, "Do you realize you're trying to put a facility in an area where not any residents want you?" We did hear one tonight, and I congratulate her for standing up in the face of such opposition. But I would argue 99, 95% of the Wolf Lodge community does not want this facility there. And they said they understand, but they're just going to press forward anyways. They don't really care that there are going to be an unwanted resident if this were to get approved. They said most people had signed off on the project. You have to understand, the highway department, or the road department, the fire department, they sign off on feasibility. Can it be done? Can we build a 40-story tall building in downtown Quarter Lane, blocking everybody's views? They would, they would sign off on it too, because it can feasibly be done, but you would say no, because that's not appropriate for our downtown. Who lives in the real world? The police force does. They were confident that after they talked to the sheriff's office, that the sheriff would come on board. Well, they had a private meeting, I'm certain, with the sheriff's office, gave all their reasons, and the sheriff office is still opposed, because they live in the real world. They understand kids will run away. I was talking with somebody, and I said, "I know you're going to try to keep kids there, but teenagers are pretty darn inventive, and they're going to find a way to get out. They're going to be mad that they're there, and they're going to find a way to get out." And I said, "What if a 20-year, my 20-year-old daughter is at home by herself, and a teen comes up the driveway, and she says, 'Leave,' and they say no, because maybe they see a vehicle or something?" And the response I got was, "Well, I'm sure you've taught your children to shoot." So I don't think that's something I ever want to put my family in, and I'm sure nobody else does, too. An angry teen that escaped from a facility is probably not going to listen to a homeowner that says, "Get off my property. You're trespassing." Let's talk about this, too. Can it be expanded? I don't know. Is there an administrative procedure that allows us to be expanded? Can it be sold in the future? Is there a guarantee that it's going to be for 24-only Cootney County residents, never to be expanded, never sold, and affordable to all our residents? I think we have to watch out for that, what could be sold for one of these big businesses. Now, let's talk also about the real estate. I do feel kind of a badge of honor that my real estate discussion, where I said it would cost 21%, I turned all of Wolf Lodge against them, according to them. So I feel very proud that I did a good job with that. No, to be realistic and honest, let's talk. Everybody that submitted a letter submitted only hearing one side of the story. Remember, I was kind of neutral at the start, only hearing when they asked me about it. But the more research I've done and the more people I've talked to, we just, I'm just going to ask you, ma'am, to just please think. Two equal houses, everything being the same, one next to an at-risk youth facility, one not. I mean, common sense says some buyers of a house would be turned off by living next to an at-risk youth facility. I can't tell you exactly how many, what percentage, but we, it just makes common sense that if they know there's a, just like somebody wouldn't care they lived next to a junkyard, but some buyers would. Some buyers will care that they live next to a troubled teen facility. It's the fact of life. Well, guess what? If you have some buyers who are going to not like living there, it is a real estate fact that if you have less buyers interested in a property, that's going to do a couple things. One, probably give you longer time on market. That just makes sense. Less people are interested, and you have to try to find that right buyer, probably the longer it's going to sit for sale. If you want to try to get it sold in a normal time, you're going to have to cut your price. Otherwise, you're hoping to find that one right, rich Californian with all the cash that can afford your house, that really loves it and doesn't care. But that's, so, just use your brain. It makes sense. Not everybody's going to want to live next to a troubled teen facility. Therefore, you're going to have less buyers. Therefore, it's worth less. So I just think it's common sense. I looked at Project Patch. It's surrounded by 150 to 450-acre parcels. This is a community. I know Vlad said it's sparsely populated. It looks like by the attendance, we might not be as sparsely populated as indicated. So I think we just need to honestly look at this and say, "We are discussing allowing a conditional use permit in an area that does get a lot of snow." I do spend a long time on my driveway, because when you get a foot and a half of snow, you don't let it build up, or else all you do is push it and get huge piles. You can't throw the snow. Alder Creek received about 10 inches of snow on Friday. It was plowed on Monday, just so you know. So it's not always perfect. So it's in an area that has homes. It's, we are out there for a reason, and I do honestly think that it is going to cause people to not want to live in that area, hesitate, pause, and therefore, that hurts property values. I think our safety concerns are real. You heard her talk about runaways do happen. Who wants to have a runaway teen come up their driveway? That is not what the Wolf Lodge area is about. So I'm going to ask that you continue, like, or follow Community Development's lead, and they have recommended denial. The sheriff has recommended denial. The Wolf Lodge residents have recommended denial for a myriad of reasons, and we just ask that you listen to the community and not just always listen to how great things can be, but what maybe it's more like in the real world. Thank you so much for your time. And can I leave this with you? Thank you.
Thank you. That'll be entered as H E 2003. Okay. Justin Freedon with Holly Troxel. I guess you're going to do a double there. You've got Patricia Terrell, Brian Terrell, Jude Ost, Erin Elsberg, Rhonda Paulson, Jim Paulson, Leonard Eisbernt, Lisa Eisbernt, Neil Trobe, and Justin Freedon.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to address you. My name is Justin Freedin, F R E D I N, with the law firm of Holly Troxel. My address is 877 West Main Street, Suite 200, in Boise, 83702. And I'm here on behalf of one client, a Wolf Lodge resident, but as you can see, other Wolf Lodge residents have graciously donated their time to allow me to speak a bit more extensively. Before proceeding any further, I would like to commend all who are here, in person or virtually, in favor or against. This is truly a remarkable display of community involvement. And I also, of course, wish to thank staff for their generous use of their talent tonight. Now, I know you're aware of this, Madam Hearing Examiner, but for the record, I'd like to briefly summarize why we are here. The only relevant issue tonight is whether the residential care facility proposed by the applicant in the specific location selected by the applicant qualifies for a conditional use permit. The applicant has spoken and written extensively about its vision, its desires, and its choices, but no applicant is entitled to pursue its vision, its desires, or its choices to the detriment of adjacent property owners. In fact, the county code expressly states that conditional uses, quote, "require a special degree of review to ensure that the use will be compatible with other permitted uses within that zone, and that the use will not impose excessive demands upon public So with that in mind, let's turn to the standards of review. Cootney County Code, Section 8.8.201(c) 1, provides that the hearing body shall not recommend a conditional use permit for approval unless seven criteria are satisfied. If the applicant fails to satisfy even one criterion, the conditional use permit cannot be recommended for approval. Now, set forth in the Excellence Staff Report, prepared by Mr. Finkel, for which he should be commended, the applicant fails to satisfy at least four criteria. Again, just one of these means that the conditional use permit is not eligible to be recommended for approval. First, a conditional use permit cannot be recommended for approval unless, quote, "the proposal is compatible with existing homes, businesses, and neighborhoods, and with the natural characteristics of the area," unquote. Regardless of whether the facility would be operated by a nonprofit corporation, it would clearly be a commercial use. More specifically, it would clearly be an institutional use. The definition of an institution, as provided by Merriam-Webster, is, quote, "a facility or establishment in which people, such as the sick or needy, live and receive care, typically in a confined setting, and often without individual consent," unquote. So regardless of how the proposed use has been classified for zoning or building purposes, the actual, real-life nature of the proposed use is that it's a commercial institutional use. The existing neighborhood, as has already been addressed, is exclusively residential, and the proposed institutional use is entirely dissimilar. Nearly 400 individuals have offered written or oral testimony emphasizing this point, and Wolf Lodge residents in particular have been nearly unanimous in testifying that the applicant's proposed facility is incompatible with their neighborhood. Approval of this conditional use permit would fundamentally and irrevocably alter the character of the area, and it would open the door for future applicants wanting to add commercial or institutional uses to this neighborhood. Now, second, a commercial, excuse me, a conditional use permit cannot be recommended for approval unless, quote, "the proposal adequately addresses site constraints or hazards and adequately mitigates any negative environmental, social, and economic impacts," unquote. There's a great deal of testimony in the record regarding potential harm to the aquifer serving the Wolf Lodge area, recognizing that this facility will not only need extensive onsite reserves for fire mitigation, but also require substantial irrigation for the proposed field and other amenities. Now, in the interest of time, I won't elaborate further, as I believe others are prepared to speak on this subject, but clearly, this is an item of concern. In addition, testimony from several licensed realtors was entered into the record at the last public hearing, estimating a 21% reduction in property values. The applicant has, quibble with some of the language used in the surveys, and offered a few realtors with contrary opinions, but it has provided no comprehensive comparable survey results to refute the original findings. The record also includes a letter from a program manager from the Idaho Department of Health and Welfare, which sought to clarify representations made by the applicant at the prior public hearing. That letter states in part, quote, "Ms. Johnson did not assert that runaways at a remote facility are avoidable or would not happen. This is because runaways can and do occur at remote locations. Ms. Johnson communicated this to Living Water and mentioned examples of runaways from other remote facilities. Runaways can and do happen at any facility, regardless of the facility's location," unquote. And we heard similar expert testimony just a bit ago. The applicant has attempted to minimize this issue. The applicant has attempted to minimize this issue by providing information regarding two years of incident summaries from a single facility, but that is a small sample size. And even those summaries include instances of battery, sexual battery, inappropriate touching, and other sexual offenses. The fact that these offenses may have occurred onsite rather than the community provides a little comfort. There is no assurance that the next offense won't occur on a neighboring property. The applicant has, has made several promises regarding its intentions to mitigate at least some of the aforementioned impacts, but these promises are not guarantees. They are not legally binding. The individuals associated with this project will retire or move on, but the facility, if constructed, will remain. Wolf Lodge residents need more than good intentions to preserve the character and value of their properties, and to ensure the safety and well-being of their families. Third, the conditional use permit cannot be recommended for approval unless, quote, "services and facilities for the proposal are available and adequate," unquote. Several neighboring property owners have testified regarding the condition of Alder Creek Road and the negative effects the proposed facility can be expected to have. Regardless of whether large vehicles or personal automobiles are utilized, a development of this magnitude and nature will require many deliveries of food and supplies, as well as visits from service providers for the people and animals onsite. The Sheriff's Office has submitted written and oral testimony expressing concerns about the response time needed to reach the proposed facility, especially during winter months. As cited by the Sheriff's Office, within the last year alone, Cootney County at-risk facilities generated at least 110 response calls for runaways, missing persons, sex offenses, prowlers, battery, arson, animal injuries, fraud, and other issues. Quoting from the Sheriff's Office, quote, "The community this facility has proposed is currently a very low-call-volume area for the Sheriff's Office law enforcement response, and is very typical of the rural designation. The proposed addition of an at-risk youth care facility will undoubtedly change that dynamic for law enforcement, the community we serve, the neighboring residents, and the potential safety or care and well-being of the patients/staff. The Sheriff's Office cannot endorse this request," unquote. The applicant has cited two facilities, one in Tennessee and the other in Boise County, that may have somewhat longer response times, but frankly, the decisions made by other jurisdictions are irrelevant. In this case here, tonight, the Sheriff's Office has found that response times would be unacceptable. Fourth, and finally, the conditional use permit cannot be recommended for approval unless, quote, "the proposal is not in conflict with the comprehensive plan," unquote. Regardless of how the applicant characterizes its use, the primary use of the site would be for treatment, not for residential, agricultural, or recreational uses. The treatment component is the purpose behind the facility. Once again, this is an institutional use, where those receiving treatment are largely held against their will. There are many locations within Cootney County that may be appropriate for a residential care facility supervising or serving at-risk youth, but this location is not one of them. But let's be clear, if, as we hope, this conditional use permit is ultimately denied, it doesn't mean that the applicant will be unable to develop a facility. It just means that this location is not appropriate for the facility proposed by the applicant. And the fact is that the record in this case overwhelmingly demonstrates that this location isn't appropriate for the facility proposed by the applicant. The applicant has failed to satisfy four of the required criteria set forth in the county code, any one of which renders it ineligible for a conditional use permit. For this reason, I respectfully request and recommend that you recommend denial of this conditional use permit. And with that, I'm happy to stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you for your testimony.
She has James Bosworth, Dana Bosworth, Josh Elsburn, Christina Trobe, Ralph Raits, Margaret Alsber, Elsburn, Joyce Shrep, Andrew Rockwell, Mark Moyer, and Marie Erica Elsburn.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Marie Erica Elsburn, 1439 East Alder Creek Road. The issuance of this conditional use permit is predicated on the applicant abating issues described by the community development in our community, but based on the applicant's submissions and public statements, the issues still remain unabated. I'm going to skip about Kells Johnson's email, but I had contacted her, and she did deny the inaccurate information that was on the hearing. I put a clip as well for your reference, but you can skip that. And again, runaways do happen regardless of location. And so, the applicant compared itself, this is their slide, is this available to IMS? And the applicant described himself, it's in contrast to Camp Eastern and Nivitan in terms of emergency response, agency approval, and overall neighborhood satisfaction. But the fact of the matter is, both camps are summer camps. They are not an at-risk youth facility, and based on IDPA code, the definition of a summer camp is way different. And if you don't mind, I would like to play a clip. Very slow sound. But this is Mr. Doty saying that you cannot compare summer camp from what the Living Water youth ranch is going to be. And there you go, there's the website. And this is the slide again from the applicant, saying that they added the fob key system for security, and for us, the community, to feel safe. And they also stated in that slide that they're not trying to fit into any classification. Here is an email exchange, again, available at IMS. When asked, Mr. Angersmith from Building Division asked Mrs. Scott about their security, she stated that they will have fob key system to keep the residents in. And this, this is again, was back in August 2nd. This was before, way before our community found out about this project. We found out about this project late September, and we voiced out a concern between late September and October. So, again, this couldn't have been consistent that they added this for our concern. And then, the app, and, and, and in response to that, the, Mr. Angersmith over here from Building Department classified them as an institution because of the lack of movement. Again, this is just an email exchange. And she also stated that they're not trying to fit in, but this is again, an email from the IMS saying specifically, the applicant asking, "Tell me what the requirements are to avoid the institution, classification." And they said that it is inaccurate to compare them. The applicant says, this is again, from their slide, it is inaccurate to compare them to INTERCEPT. Well, this was, this is their website, as of, well, even today, it's the same. These are the symptoms that they are trying to advertise that they're going to treat, and that's INTERCEPTs. To me, it's very similar, maybe the severity is not stated, again, and there's, there are more symptoms that they are advertising than the INTERCEPT. And looks more like apples, the apples to me, to be honest, but, so, this is again, from the applicant. This is what they were, they presented last time, and again, spoke about today that they're treating. Those highlighted ones are not in their list last time it was presented to us. And even, this is again, their most current presentation. In my opinion, they specifically omitted symptoms that are disadvertised to the public that they're willing to treat. And, again, these are the items on the website, but omitted from their presentation. And here is the Idaho Health and Welfare website. They have a list of children's residential care for the state of Idaho, and they said they are very similar to Project Patch, and so you can see, INTERCEPT and Project Patch are categorized in the same list, because they are going, they are both applying for the same licensing, have to file the same IDPA, IDAPA code. So, again, from their slide, they say they plan to mitigate emergency concerns by using lifeflight helicopters, and they included in their exhibit, the lifeflight statements of understanding. And if you look closely, I highlighted it for you, and says that availability of this service is not guaranteed due to weather conditions. Again, like we all brought up in the past, there is the weather factor. And also, what they have failed to mention is that the lifeflight helicopters are subjected to the code of federal regulation of the basic visual flight rules. Just like the weather we had last Friday, where the visibility is actually way below the half a mile statute based on the aviation weather forecast. And I've also spoke, the same day I was speaking to the lifeflight heli, lifeflight pilot, and I have an email confirmation and his permission as well to share that email with you, which I will be submitting as well. And here's another slide from the applicant, saying that they not, they no longer, or they doesn't say that, but in the past, they've told, right now, they're saying they do not consider Wolf Lodge remote. And they have, again, included four maps showing comparisons in terms of emergency responses and approvals, and, well, I wish I could play the clip for you, but these are their words. They call Wolf Lodge remote and rugged, and they picked Wolf Lodge because it is so remote and rugged. I wish I could play them, but apparently, it's not working. So this is their exhibit 2B, and they said that, again, it says right there where dispatch, their dispatch station that they pull is Station 3. When I contacted Cootney County Fire and Rescue, they confirmed, this is from my address, which is closer to the fire station, that they've confirmed our dispatch station is Station 4, not Station 3. And there's Mr. Fire Chief Archer confirming, saying 28 minutes, 17 miles, in normal conditions by Google Maps. And there's the map, from the fire station, from general address in that area. And so, again, this is exhibit 2C from the applicant, saying that Non-Lie Emergency Response is about 56 minutes away, and they got approved. If they look really hard and called around, Hickman's Sheriff is 12 minutes away from Non-Lie. I called them, I've emailed them, and they confirmed to me that they are the ones who take calls from Non-Lie. And this is Project Patch. Thanks to the report that was submitted by the applicant, you could see how impressive it is, the response time. They were there sometimes 10 minutes or less. But let me to ask Sheriff Turner, what if they had a substation in Garden Valley, which, and he, in fact, he confirmed to me that they have a substation in Garden Fire, Garden Valley Fire District, which is seven minutes away in two different routes. And there's their letter of recommendation, and again, there's, you know, saying that there's no crimes, and the applicant, Mr. Doty, or one of the board members, again, said that there are no crimes, and that's their old one. I, you know, there's been a change again on their narrative, saying that there's no, Project Patch has not even had one violent or sexual robbery incident since its conception. Well, in 2016, there is a convicted sexual abuser that lived in their residential, in their staff residence. In 2009, there was another one, who was the dorm manager for Project, for Project Patch, who was also convicted and still in prison right now. And here's the list. I'm sure you guys have all heard about it, and again, this is part, if, when you ask for report, this is the cover sheet, cover sheet for the, yeah, I love my accent. Anyway, this is the cover sheet that was not in the exhibit. Yeah, and that's Mr.'s, the applicant's son, confirming that runaways do happen. He stated he was a Project Patch client, and that, you know, there were four attempts in other, in over a year that he was there, a little over a year that he was there, but he did say nobody made it. Why? Because Project Patch is flat terrain. It's not wooded like Wolf Lodge, and also, it has very, it's a, it's a much better visual, there's no, it's unobstructed visibility. And here's just an example of that report, in case you don't get a chance. It is available on IMS. Please do, take, take some time to do your due diligence, to anyone who supports this, research what goes on inside this facility. That's one of the health and welfare calls that they get. Somebody jumping out of the window, trying to run away. And this is the Idaho Health and Welfare. Once a year, the licensing manager goes in there to inspect what's going on in, in the facility. And this is for Project Patch in 20, for the year 2021. And despite having two convicted sexual abuser, despite having two pedophiles, they had let people work without, without completing criminal history or completing fingerprint background. This is from a, their model, their model residential facility. This is from something, so, a place that's been established for years and years. And again, this is just a, a concrete evidence of abuse that goes on. There's children, their children being interviewed, and they were, they were engaging in social isolation, where they were not allowed to speak, or acknowledge, or even look at the staff to ask for their basic needs. And again, excessive exercise still being imposed. And I will submit also the 2010 survey, survey findings, same from IDAPA, I'm sorry, from Idaho Health and Welfare, that still, similar, similar findings are being, are similar deficiency are still happening, 2021, fast forward. So, I got ahold of one of the previous clients, and she, she shared this with me. Her daughter was there, 2009, 2010, and this is what they were paying. It was about $4,700 a month. If you use the US Bureau Labor Statistics Inflation Calculator, you're looking at 60, about 60, 6, 6,700 a month. This is the median income of Cootney County, that's Boise, just so you could see, since Project Patch is in Boise. So, we're looking at people, average Cootney resident, making 2,500 a month, and looking at 60, about 6,700 a month cost. So, I really, like everyone else is questioning, who is it for? Who is it really for? Finally, I do feel that omission and misinformation speaks volume about somebody's integrity, and if, we're talking about entrusting children who it needs to this facility. And there, just to make it clear, since their mission statements and their website describe that there's evidence that this, this type of treatment is helpful, there are no empirical data that shows for, that this success for this type of facility. After, after reaching out to the victims and reading scientific, scientific research, abuse, and mental and emotional scars, and sometimes that are the prominent results of this type of facility. And I'd like to thank everyone for being patient and for all of your work, and, oh, one more thing I'd like to add. That's, the Sheriff's Report from the Boise County shows that we do need the sheriff, our sheriff, if this facility should get approved, should be approved, so I ask that you deny them, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That PowerPoint will be entered as HE 2004.
Okay.
Oh, can I just submit, this are all the supporting documents, the email exchanges from all the people that I reached out, and the correct timing and.
Yep.
Yep, good. Thank you.
And that'll be HE 2005.
Okay. Casey Ryder, who is opposed and has Casey Ryder, Nick Beckett, Linda Ryder. I don't know, something with an R, Ryder.
Robert.
Robert, okay. Emily Moyer, Cindy Smith, Larry Smith. Emily Moyer, Cindy Smith, Larry Smith, somebody Estep, S.
Estep.
Estep? First name?
Fona.
Fona? Okay. Mike Estep and Tom Pace Pine?
Pace?
Pace? Okay.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Cassandra Ryder. My nickname is Cassie. I live at 6219 South Wolf Lodge Creek Road. My grandparents moved to Southern Idaho, or from Southern Idaho to Wolf Lodge in 1952. My father and his siblings grew up and still live in Wolf Lodge. My cousins, my siblings, and I all grew up in Wolf Lodge. Some of my nieces and nephews are currently growing up in Wolf Lodge. To date, there are five homes in Wolf Lodge, soon to be eight, occupied by descendants of Evan and Betty Ryder, my grandparents. My family is not unique. There are many multi-generational families in Wolf Lodge. This is a, not a typical community. To many of us, this is our home. For me and many residents of Wolf Lodge, Wolf Lodge means family. We have a vision that our home remains rural and residential with single-family homes. Many of us would be reluctant to accept any high-density or commercial development in Wolf Lodge. The Living Water Youth Ranch is seeking a conditional use permit to develop a multimillion-dollar commercial facility for at-risk youth in Wolf Lodge. This use does not match the character of our community. Here are some reasons why I oppose the CUP. Water Resources. The Comprehensive Plan states, "A development of a certain size must demonstrate sufficient water will support the new development without negatively impacting surrounding landowners or the hydraulic system." What is a development of a certain size, as stated by the Comprehensive Plan? Major subdivisions, minor subdivisions, and planned unit developments seem to meet the development of a certain size definition, as they are required to demonstrate adequate water sufficiency as part of their application process. This, the proposed facility would be equivalent to 16 homes in Cootney County. Why 16 homes? 24 children plus 16 staff per 24 hours. That's, I get 16 staff by two daytime shifts of six individuals plus four evening staff. That's 16. So again, that's 40 individuals onsite every 24 hours. The average persons per household in Cootney County is 2.57. Forty individuals divided by 2.57 is 15.56. That's 16 homes in Wolf Lodge. That is very high density for our area, especially on 72 acres. And if they break off 20 acres for our homes, that would be 52 acres. At 72 acres, that would be seven and a half acres per plot. That's too high of a density for our area. Based on the number of individuals who will be onsite in Wolf Lodge every 24 hours, this development should be considered a development of a certain size. This development should be required to demonstrate sufficient water will be able to support the new development without negatively impacting surrounding landos and the hydraulic system. The Department of Idaho Water Resources says, "When there is not enough water to satisfy the wat, all water rights, new or junior water right holders do not get water." To be clear, the applicant has proposed a high-density commercial facility in a rural area. The applicant has not demonstrated that sufficient water will be available for the proposed location in Wolf Lodge. If there is not enough water to satisfy all the water rights, the proposed development will not get water. How can a commercial development meant to support 24 children, 24/7, be approved or even considered when adequate water resources are not guaranteed? The minimum staff for a 24 period, I compiled the IDAPA list 160602 and various documents Living Waters has publicly presented. I calculate that there will be 30 individual staff members onsite in Wolf Lodge most every day. That includes clinical director, director of applications, service worker, social worker, eight direct care staff for a 24-hour period, medical emergency staff, two teachers, as they are required to have by, for one teacher for every 20 children, security staff, transportation, maintenance, kitchen, chaplain, therapist, teacher assistant, or tutor. And they also are required to have high adventure staff, as declared in IDAPA 160602, for children's outdoor therapeutic program activities, which are target sports, hiking, challenge course activities, et cetera. And that would be a minimum of five staff required by IDAPA for those activities. So again, that's 30 individual staff members onsite most days. And that doesn't include the additional traffic, which would be interns, volunteers, patient, transportation, family visitations, conferences, regular annual inspections, visits and deliveries by office staff, board of directors, et cetera, specialized services and deliveries like plumbers, timber maintenance, propane delivery, veterinarians for horses and livestock, farrier for the horses, feed delivery for horses and livestock, and emergency services. We may be under the threshold for a traffic impact study or a trip generation letter, but that is a significant increase in the traffic for this rural area. Children's residential care facility is a commercial development, not a dwelling. A commercial facility is defined in Cootney County Land Use Development Code definitions as "a business or enterprise which involves the purchase, sale, or rental of goods and services, or is otherwise carried on for profit. The sale or rental of goods or services conducted by nonprofit entities shall also be included within this definition." Dwellings are intended for families. This is not a family dwelling. Will this facility serve local residents? Where will these children come from? There is no indication in the applicant narrative that the intent of this facility is to serve primarily the residents of Wolf Lodge and/or Cootney County. I doubt that Wolf Lodge has 24 residents ages 13 to 17. And the CUP, or this facility is not intended to serve us, the residents of Wolf Lodge. Therefore, the CUP does not meet the Comprehensive Plan requirements and should be denied. About education. In their file, A16A, Exhibit One is their schedule, and it indicates that children will be participating in school GED prep for 2.5 hours a day. This facility, as a children's residential care facility, is required to meet additional standards for children's residential care facilities, education programs, which is a minimum hours operate for at least as many school hours and clock out, excuse me, many school days and clock hours as are required by Section 33-512 in Idaho Code. Idaho Code says about education that the minimum, minimum number of instructional hours are grades, for grades nine through 12 is 990 hours, for grades four through eight is 900 hours. So at two and a half hours a day, these children will have to be doing education 360 days a year. That's a lot of days. It seems like they should be doing more education per day than is indicated in their submitted schedule. Comparison to other children's residential care facilities in Idaho. The applicant and local residents have submitted unflattering letters about Intercept and Project Patch. Parents, children, and staff have been hurt and let down by children's residential care facilities licensed and operated in Idaho. These programs operate under the exact same license that Living Waters Youth Ranch will operate under. That's IDAPA 160602. It is in, it is accurate to compare the applicant's proposal to other children's residential care facilities in Idaho, because neither Idaho nor Cootney County have descriptions, definitions, categories, or standards for what high, moderate, or low-risk youth behavior is. Therefore, there is no regulation that requires applicants' residence or the operation of a children's residential facility to be within or remain within a high, moderate, or low-risk definition, category, or standard. In Idaho, a children's residential care facility is a children's residential care facility. There is no regulations that distinct behavior categories. If the proposed facility is established, it seems there is little to nothing that can, the community will be able to do to prevent the facility from taking use with high-risk behaviors. Project Patch incidents. The applicant submitted project patch incidents reported by the Boise County Sheriff's Office. While there were no incidents of harm to the community or property crimes, the Boise County Sheriff was the primary responder to these incidents, not lifeflight or fire and rescue. Considering the comments provided to the county by the sheriff's office, the proposed facility may impose excessive demands on local police. In Cootney County, in the Land Use and Development Code, Chapter Nine definitions, a conditional use definition states, "The use will not impose excessive demands on public services or utilities." As Erica pointed out, they have their list of accepted treatments. In their list, they say they will include mild substance abuse. I wonder if they will need to fire, follow additional requirements about substance abuse disorders and mental health programs as required by IDAPA. The field. The applicant's site map includes an acre of field. I'm very curious about this field. What is the proper process that will be used to clear, level seed, and irrigate this field? How will it be maintained? Regular mowing, fertilizers, pesticides, et cetera? Will the use of fertilizers and pesticides on an acre of field have a negative effect on Alder Creek or the unnamed Plast Two stream? Should this field be considered landscaping? This field, an acre of field, typically takes 27,000 gallons of water for an inch of water. An inch of water will be needed at least once a week to keep water green in the summer. I question if they have adequate water resources to support the drinking system, the required fire suppression system, and the irrigation of this field. They are also required to have a fence. I question if recreation activities will be held inside or outside this fence. And according to IDAPA, they are required to have monthly fire drills. And I question if these fire drills will be held inside or outside of the required fence. And if they are held outside of this fence, how will they, how will staff keep children from running away during those fire drills? Why build in Wolf Lodge a neighborhood of angry, intimidating, and fearful people? The applicant doesn't think very highly of the residents of Wolf Lodge, as illustrated by comments about dinner being canceled. In applicant file A20, they state multiple angry people, multiple angry, intimidated people were the reason for the Wolf Lodge Steakhouse dinner being canceled. They also state the Wolf Lodge community is not willing to hear anything about the ranch or converse in any capacity. Fear spread through false narrative. In applicant file A-21, they state, "It is apparent that the community is fearful and angry." And it seems to be more irrefutable evidence that the Wolf Lodge, that Wolf Lodge simply doesn't want Living Waters Youth Ranch in their backyard. The applicant labels the residents of Wolf Lodge as angry, intimidating, not willing to hear anything, fearful, and implies that we are unable to distinguish true from false. How do these accusations help to establish harmony with this community? Harmony is required by the Comprehensive Plan. According to the Cootney County Conditional Use Permit Application, the applicant is responsible for demonstrating that the proposal meets requirements of the Comprehensive Plan, and the applicant is responsible for resolving any problems. The residents of Wolf Lodge are not required to agree with this proposal. We are not required to harmonize with the applicant. We have access to state and county code, the Comprehensive Plan, and all the public documents submitted to the county by the applicant. We have done our research. We are entitled to our own opinions and our own vision for our community. The applicant is required to harmonize with our community. As illustrated in the applicant's public comments, the applicant and the proposal do not harmonize with the community of Wolf Lodge. The hearing process and the Comprehensive Plan exist in part to give residents the opportunity to voice our opinions. We have the right to express our vision and our, for our neighborhood and protect our North Idaho way of life. The clear public sentiment of the residents of Wolf Lodge and the residents of Cootney County is clear. This CUP should be denied. About 154 residents of Wolf Lodge submitted a notice of public hearing form indicating that they do not support this request. There are more "do not support this request" applications from Wolf Lodge alone than the applicant got in support from the entire county. And I think that speaks volume. We, Wolf Lodge, do not want this facility developed in our area. This CUP should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you.
HE 2006.
Okay. Ashley Ryder is opposed, and she has Ashley Ryder, Thomas Ryder, Brayden Smith, Steve Cox, Catherine Ryder, Sheri Morfit, Bob Bolich, John Coleman, Jocelyn Henning, and Todd Henning.
Ashley Ryder. I reside at 5555 South Wolf Lodge Creek Road, Coeur d'Alene, Idaho, 83814. Most of what I prepared tonight really goes over what Cassie Ryder and what the, our other fellow speakers have already addressed, so I'm going to save the dinnertime for all of us and bypass that. I am standing in front of you all tonight to express my strong opposition to allowing Living Water Youth Ranch to open a residential treatment program near the area of the Alder Creek in the Wolf Lodge District. First of all, as residents and property owners located just four miles from this proposed site directly on Wolf Lodge Creek Road, it came as quite a surprise to my family, extended family, and neighbors alike to recently hear that this area was the proposed site for the at-risk youth program. I do want to emphasize "at risk." I have heard throughout this meeting today, "low risk," but nowhere in the website does it say "low risk." It does emphasize "at risk." As the Director of Operations on the national and local level for a local residential transitional program myself, that has a program that operates in Osborne, Coeur d'Alene, Hayden, and New Braunfels, Texas, with licensure in Florida, I do feel with my position and combined with over 10 years of experience in the field, I come to all of you with deep concerns for the location of the program. Programs such as my own workplace, Intercept, Daybreak, and the proposed Living Water Youth Ranch. The goal ultimately is to help young adults and at-risk youth with mental health and behavioral issues through a mix of therapy, behavioral modifications, and direct mentoring support. And although I am not opposed to the idea of residential treatment programs, I mean, it is how I make a living after all, I am opposed to the location of this proposed site. A primary concern from my point of view is the lack of health, police, and fire facilities near the proposed site. As a member of the intake screening team in my position, programs like this are often contracted because there is desire from the parents and/or education consultants that these families hire to provide behavior modification and therapeutic modalities. With group and change, or with growth and change, comes negative behaviors and regression. Change is hard. With the advertised intake of clientele type that Living Waters is looking at, depression, low self-worth, suicide ideation, defiance, promiscuous behaviors, and runaways, for example, clients will need access to medical care in times when triggers go from escalation to crisis involving more than a PRN. We often see clients who cut themselves a suicide ideation, be it attention-seeking, accidents, or purposefully. Then there's concern when staff are involved in crisis with a client. During one of the adventures, their website speaks up, or the general demands on the job. Take an incident our own program was involved in just two weeks ago in the Silver Valley. Our location in Silver Valley is exactly 3.4 miles from the Shoshone Medical Center. We are fortunate that we are so close, because we had a resident who described, who is described by staff and the housemates he resides with as a kind, well-mannered gentleman, but is diagnosed with autism and schizophrenia, who was working with a staff member when he decided to walk out of the house to disturb the neighbors. When the staff member attempted to persuade him to stay inside because it was very cold and dark outside, he proceeded to go out the door. We are not a lockdown facility, so our staff member simply followed the client out. When the staff member followed this client out, the client was not happy that the staff was right behind him, so the student grabbed a snow shovel and hit him across the head. Being in the town of Osborne, the staff and client were fortunate enough to have quick nearby access to medical care and police response. In a location as such, there isn't nearby medical assistance, and emergencies would be poorly addressed. I understand that our local sheriff's department is I understand that our local sheriff's department is also an opposing authority with a data denial. Programs come with risks, both to students, clients, staff, and communities. Without local police support and staffing numbers, issues of laws being broken create unsafe situations. This evening, we've heard a lot about Intercept and the calls that may or may not have occurred in that program. However, I've not heard about the amount of calls my own program has endured from our local police station and sheriff's department. As a member of Integrated Interventions, I am under a nondisclosure agreement, but I do have permission from owners Terry Edelman and Angela Edelman to speak on behalf of the program tonight. Of those 110 calls that were addressed earlier this evening, I jokingly say I wonder if 98 of them were from Integrated Interventions, but that number is a true statistic. We are a program that, again, is situated within the town, and we have our own police force who know our program and have commented that we are a trusted program in the area. We are likely staffed more than they are, and so they give us the choice to drive our residents to Cooten Health on our own or to transport these clients amongst their own vehicles. Oftentimes, our own clients are more equipped to do so. Unsafe situations include trespassing. When clients run away or leave the property without permission, trespassing risks increases. Even in non-lockdown programs, clients get out. In a remote location such as the site, clients can trespass neighbors, own land, and facilities such as barns, shops, I-90, and livestock. Skipping over some of the other points that were already made, I want to address something that Cassie Ryder also addressed, and it's the lifestyle of the Wolf Lodge District. When I joined Integrated Interventions in 2019, I came with experience from working in another local program starting in 2006. I lived in the middle of Coeur d'Alene, in fact, in several different houses. The job itself brings on stress, so I moved out to Wolf Lodge District to be with my in-laws, as well as my husband, who Cassie Ryder addressed. Thomas Ryder is my husband, and he grew up out there. To make that choice was to make a choice to live with more privacy, less people, distance between my neighbors, serenity, a safer lifestyle, a proximity to nature, less noise, and all in all, to be able to de-stress from a rather high-intense position. Having a program like the one that I call my own workplace in my backyard takes away from that. Not only do I fear the paranoia that my neighbors will live in because of every time a sound of a car door closes or the lights that drive on by, but for myself, looking to de-stress from a position that understands the high stresses that these programs bring, I do fear that this will not occur with them in my backyard. When we talk about the neighborhood of Wolf Lodge District, we talk about a community that I was surprised to hear that, when I moved in, that there are two potlucks this season. I thought, "Two potlucks? Well, why is that?" My husband shared with me, "It's because we want to know our neighbors. We want to know every single neighbor." Having a residential program in our backyard like this could very well take away from that because of the paranoia my neighbors will fear. They may not come out to this, these potlucks. Wolf Lodge District is a community neighborhood. I think of my father-in-law. My father-in-law built a 500-gallon fire truck because the fire district would not respond out there. I, myself, am going through a permitting process, which the city of Coeur d'Alene just approved as of three weeks ago, but one of the annexation rules that I had to jump over was making many appointments with the fire district. And the way that we were able to get our land approved for annexation was because my father-in-law has this 500-gallon fire truck that he's willing to help out with. So for me, I speak mostly of the day-to-day incidents that occur in my own program, and I really, truly am opposed because of the lack of health, police, and fire facilities. Thank you.
Thanks. Pebbles Allen Gentlemen has Shelley Hammond, Nimi Murphy, Tim Leader, Douglas Morfit, somebody leader, Jonah, Janice Thornton, Stan Thornton, Cece Baldwin, Will Baldwin, and Pebbles.
Thank you. My name is Pebbles Allen Gentlemen. I live at 2813 West Piazza Drive, Meridian, Idaho. The reason I got involved in this is not because of the land where it might be built or the roads or water, anything like that. When I heard that they were modeling their program after Project Patch, I had to get involved. I had to place my daughter at Project Patch back in 2009. She was having a lot of difficulties. She did run away from home. She was smoking marijuana. She was suicidal, hooking up with the wrong people. I had had her in two different hospitals, gone through several therapists, nothing was working. So I tried to find a facility that was close to my home so I could be involved in her treatment, and Project Patch was closest to my home. So I emailed them and asked them about it. They asked me what her behaviors were. I emailed them back, and I was approved almost instantly. There was no background check. That was not even a mention. We went to the facility, and we met with the administrator and one of the clinical directors. And I asked them specifically about their religious doctrine, because they were Seventh Day Adventists, and I told them I was very opposed to their, I did not believe in their doctrine, and I wanted to know how that was presented within their program. They said they were very general Christian-based. Well, that was not the case. From the get-go, as soon as I left the facility that same day, my daughter tried to leave the facility. She walked down the dirt road, the staff did follow her, but then they proceeded with threatening her, saying that if she tried that again, they would take all of her clothes from her, give her a bed sheet, put her in an isolation room. The next thing was, my daughter was not very, of course, stressed out by the situation, and she wasn't eating. They told her if she didn't eat, they would put an IV in her and feed her that way, which, of course, was a lie. And if the children didn't eat, they had a specific amount of time to eat their meal. If they didn't eat, they were forced to run laps for every minute that they were not on time in eating that meal, they had to run a lap. The male staff were allowed to roam freely throughout the girls dorm. They would knock on the girls dorm and enter without waiting for an okay or anything, and this happened repeatedly. There was no therapy whatsoever within this facility. Their idea of therapy was giving them a form to complete, an assignment to complete on paper. My daughter was there for three months. I had one family session. What they continued to do was say, "Oh, your daughter didn't complete these assignments," or "She didn't complete them the right way," and then all of a sudden, "Oh, she lost her phone privileges because of that," or "She couldn't, you couldn't come and visit her. She couldn't go on the family visit." There was always a reason why. My daughter later told me that every phone call was monitored by the staff. They would sit right next to the child making the phone call, and the kids were so intimidated, they wouldn't say anything negative. So it was, it was just problem after problem. I sent her a Christian book to read. Oh, that one, you know, she couldn't have it. It was lost at first, and then, no, she couldn't have it. No explanation as to why. And every time I questioned them about things that were going on there, the more pushback I got. And so then, all of a sudden, phone calls were less and less. It was just, they were just literally cutting off communication. My daughter told me in a session with her case manager that she was saying, "Why do you think your parents would do such a thing to send you to a place like this?" So they were deliberately, of course, in hindsight, we were able to figure it out, not at the time, but they were deliberately trying to pit us against each other. And the reason being is because then it prolonged her visit, because she wasn't getting better. So it was that much longer, because when you go in there, you have to sign a year contract, regardless of whether they need a year, is how it was coined to me, which was ridiculous. So when I finally just got fed up, because I just kept hearing these things over and over again, my daughter was forced to go, and not my daughter, all the kids, by the way, when I say these things. They were forced to go and clean staff housing, wash staff cars, then project, and they didn't get any kind of compensation. Project Patch would hire, or be hired for projects in the community. The kids would go into the community and do all these projects, but they were compensated for Project Patch, but the kids weren't compensated at all. Oh, they would tell me, "Oh, they get extra TV time or some silly thing." Well, that wasn't the case either. Everything was monitored that they did. They had no extra food out for the kids to have just off, you know, off time if they were hungry. One of the girls took a granola bar, and she was punished for that. If my daughter didn't follow the rules, she did go out into a little wilderness thing. They did take her clothes from her, and she had to wear this jumpsuit. She was given oatmeal to eat and things that were not anything good or healthy, just like, almost like scraps, is how she, she told me that this happened to all of the kids. It wasn't just her. This is ongoing abuse. The way that they, they, there's no therapy at all in terms of, first of all, that there are no therapists that were licensed there when my daughter was there. It was only after my complaints to Health and Welfare that they were mandated to hire licensed therapists. So that was something that was positive, that we did get changed. But the therapy consisted of them doing these papers and then sitting in front of a group of peers, and the peers admonishing them for the behaviors that were wrong. They had, the administrator at the time came into the dorm, and one of the gals who was there for, had been in foster care, was already over 18, actually, and she was, in foster care, was there for such a long time. She was friends with this administrator, who came in, and she proceeded to sit on his lap, and he did not say to her, "Please don't do that. That's inappropriate." This is the kind of regular stuff that went on. Then I finally got fed up and said, "No, you're, you're trying to keep us apart, and there's something going on here that's not okay with me." Every time I questioned something, the clinical director at the time then said she was going to talk to the corporate office in Washington, and I had just said, my husband and I said, "That's enough. We're, we're going to go up and get her." And in the interim, she sent me an email saying, "Oh, she spoke to corporate office," and all of our communication was being put on hold for now. I mean, they had no right to do these things, but that's how they controlled this situation in, in an effort to get the revenue, you know, to keep that flowing nicely. So when we left, when I came up and got her, I filed this complaint with her, Health and Welfare, and I think that was submitted into evidence, page after page of things that was going on there that was not okay. They just ruled with fear and intimidation. So I would ask, I would ask these people who are modeling their, their program after Project Patch, "Did you not do your homework? Or are you just omitting information, such as, just a few weeks after I took my daughter out, this Ryan Van Hook, who was grooming, by the way, he was grooming my daughter, as well as two other girls, and one of the girls he hooked into believing him? He allowed her to escape, put her in his trunk, and then drove her to his apartment in Boise, where he had repeated sex with her." And the mother filed a lawsuit, and the mother won a $4.3 million judgment against Project Patch. Project Patch had to pay al- almost half a million dollars, saying, "Yes, we were wrong in hiring him." And, and then the other big thing was that all they did was hire people that they, family members. The two dorm managers were married. The case manager my daughter had, her husband was the cook. Ryan Van Hook, his mother was the administrative secretary. Clearly, they aren't vetting these people because they're just saying, "Well, they're family members." And interesting, I heard tonight, there's a, a husband and wife and a brother and sister involved in this new development. So I would question that greatly. And also, I've, I've did a little research myself on the church, and so they seem to be like, they're the Latter Day Saints as well, or Seventh Day Adventists. There's concern there, great concern. So I just, I know they don't want to hear this, but it just seems like you can't refute the facts. I was there, I lived it. After my daughter left, my daughter suffered great PTSD because of what she had to endure there. And not, not only that, but she, to this day, still has night terrors because of the things that went on at Project Patch and how she was treated. So yes, it does harm children. It doesn't help children. I would wholly agree with Ruth. And if I had it to go back and do, I would definitely do it differently and have, just find a therapist that she could connect with, because they aren't interested in providing care for these children, mental health care. Half of them don't even have any experience. You know that the CEO, the first, the job he had before being hired as the CEO for Project Patch was as a river guide? Like, there's absolutely no mental health background. So to me, this just tells me, it's more about the finances and nothing about the children and the care they're receiving. So I would urge you to please, please do your homework. Look at the evidence that's been submitted, because you can't refute that. It did happen. We did experience this. We did have reports to Health and Welfare. They did find things wrong with them. So hiring pedophiles, that's what you're modeling your program after? Because that's what's happened here, not once, but twice. And Richard Smalley, you know, he did it over a couple, two, three years. This happened. Please do your research. You're harming kids. We're not helping them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We have one more group. Joe Whipple, who has Peyton Ost, Bettina Whipple, Jeff Bustow, Rolf Hibbert, Dennis Dunn, Patricia Dunn, Judy Robbins, Kay Bloodso, Ken Bloodso, and Joe Whipple.
Joseph Whipple, 30-year resident property, or 30-year property owner, 16781 Alder Creek Road in Coeur d'Alene. Madam Hearing Examiner, these opinions are offered with respect to all. I do not know any of the applicants, so I will speak from that point of view. So now I'd like to bring in my own personal story briefly into the hearing. I was an attack helicopter pilot assigned to fly the DMZ in South Korea in the 1990s, and with a career on the upward path, having just been awarded Top Gun and facing more deployments. For the sake of my family, it was time to punch out mid-career. I designed and built the house we currently live in and raised our son there. He grew to be a responsible member of society, having joined the Marine Reserves and is employed in Cooten County as a first responder. From my deck, when I look out south, out of my windows, I see the 73 acres in question, and it comes into view, and I can hear the trucks from Interstate 90. Having raised our son there, I can tell you many great memories we enjoyed. I never tasked my son with getting firewood, maintaining the driveway, or the property. If he did anything, it was on his own volition. Whenever we burned brush, it was an opportunity to stay warm on some November day and cook hot dogs and marshmallows on the end of a stick. I think of all of our great members from those days and how we would all get together at someone's house for funded fellowship. I believe because of this proposal, our new neighbors will revive that type of fellowship. We hear of the general need to assist the children, but the specifics about the program are deeply concerning. Despite our, despite our showing here and our multiple comments, the applicants couldn't, in my opinion, care what happens to us in the neighborhood. It is about money, a lot of money. The applicant cited two separate programs, according to their original presentation. One is a model they sought to distance themselves from, the other, Project Patch, to cite as their program model. From a 2019 Cooten County Court case, on page 15, a dad paid $15,400 per month for his out-of-state daughter to be a patient at a teenage mental rehabilitation facility. If one uses that number, multiplies it by 24 patients, times 12 months, the total is over $4 million per year. Obviously, I can't say what Living Water would charge for the proposed facility and compound, but it stands to reason that this is a main, if not the main factor, in their determined effort to oppose the neighborhood despite the overwhelming response not favoring their proposal. It's not about us having a false narrative, being... It's not about us having a false narrative, being fearful, angry, hateful, or adopting a mob mentality as a letter addressing a canceled event proffers. We have more than enough time to reach, uh, to research the facts and have heard their proposal. The more the neighbors searched, the worse it looked. Applicants cited Project Patch as not being harmful to Garden Valley local residents as in their letter to residents in the packet, which I have here. Um, about, we have gathered information demonstrating, this is a portion of the quote, I can leave it with you, but you already have that online. Uh, we have gathered information demonstrating that patch policies and procedures have kept incidents very low. In fact, there have been capital word zero incidents in the community since nineteen eighty-four that resulted in property crimes or harm to local residents. We also have incident reports over a two-year time span from Boise County Sheriff demonstrating the same. Essentially, we have spent time addressing your concerns to the best of our abilities. That's worth merit. However, we also, as neighbors, uh, as was put up by Erica Elton, have the same information from two-year period or approximately the same timeframe, ending out twenty twenty-two, with a bunch of, uh, information that includes, um, emergency calls for service to patch range from runaway, battery, sex offense, health and welfare. I'm trying to minimize the repeating of some of the information that's already been put forward. This is an unnecessary burden that KCSO and Cootney County Fire and Rescue don't currently have here. It is a wooded area, there is no activity there, right? So this is what they're proposing and, uh, this is a type of activity that we know will occur at some point in time, based upon the, uh, information that we receive online in addition. Some of the unseen costs are the mental and emotional harm to victims and the high financial cost to taxpayers through the justice system, including incarceration. And this is not included into, in some of the, you know, proponents', uh, views on this, and it needs to be brought to light. So there's information about the, um, the whole teenage, uh, industry, troubled teen industry. And I would encourage you to, I, I have it here so, so you can get it right. A CBT radio, uh, troubled teen industry, if somebody were to, if you were to type that into Google, and it's a thirty-one minute, uh, presentation. I do appreciate Ashley Ryder's presentation because she comes to my firsthand perspective. This is about a journalist who looked into this whole, um, troubled teen industry back in two thousand and ten in a podcast interview, and I highly recommend it. I'll refer you and anyone to get an understanding of the troubled teen industry, uh, at, at a further, in a further depth. Um, a collection of organization, okay, in it, the journalist who has invest, who has investigated the industry offers great insight into these types of programs. A collection of organizations takes a tough, tough love approach. Wilderness programs, boot camps, et cetera, is basically what she's highlighting as, uh, what these are, these programs are like. Not necessarily Living Water Youth Ranch or the, or other specific ones, but this is just in general on these. Okay. Basically, she says it is designed around the concept of breaking the children in order to fix them. In order to do that, they need to be totally isolated from the outside world where staff completely controls the environment. Such tactics, uh, include sleep deprivation, not much food, and so on are mentioned in this, uh, podcast. The primary feature is the emotional atmosphere revolving around fear, humiliation, emotional attacks, whenever it takes to, whatever it takes to break the child down. Obviously, I cannot attest to Living Water, uh, if Living Water would employ these techniques, but I do wonder as to why this compound would be only suited to this one property in particular. With National Forest to the west, Interstate ninety to south, forest to the east, and a county road to the north down slope, the property sits higher in elevation as so such activities could be, uh, could actually be concealed. So I have two slides from their presentation. One is, says, um, from their presentation in October, it says, Project Patch is a program that Living Water Youth Ranch most closely modeled our program after. And then the follow-on is a picture of the residential care facility. In their October twenty, uh, twentieth presentation, applicant on page fifteen, um, stated that, that was their, their model, and because applicants sought to bring forth only a positive position, it is only right to offer opposing, uh, points of view. I cannot testify that all this information is accurate because it was on the internet, but I can say that at least, as we have just heard, the Ryan Van Hook and Mr. Swally incidents did occur. Also, they were offered, uh, and with sheriff's reports on that. The point here is that this can be sus, this, what I'm about to read can be substantiated. And with that, I'll, I'll read a bit of the, um, program, or the information about the anti-troubled teen industry activism and survivor report, this survivor report. So I'm looking at my time here. Project Patch is an acronym for Planned Assistance for Troubled Children. It's a behavioral modification program. Project Patch is marketed as a Christian residential center for boys and girls aged twelve to seventeen who are struggling with depression, anxiety, addictions, um, ODD, uh, oppositional disorder, uh, school failure, trauma, or self-harming behaviors. Although the program accepts male and female residents, they are completely separate on different parts of the campus. The program structure, and this is what we're talking about, I heard the proponents and supporters talking about the need for such, uh, such facilities, but it's the program that's employed in there, much like a computer, we need computers, but the programs in it are, is what we're really working with. And this is the program structure that Project Patch has, according to what I'm reading here. It starts like other behavioral prob, uh, modification program, Project Patch uses a level system consisting of five levels, each with different rules and expectations. The levels are reported to be work, crew, this level is typically used as punishment. Orientation, this is the first level of Project Patch. Okay, and it continues on level one, two, and three, and due to the interest of time, I'm gonna have to move forward. Work, crew, then we're gonna go back here. This is level is used as punishment by Project Patch. On this level, residents will lose all their privileges, are required to spend all day performing manual labor such as digging ditches and filling them back up. The punishment lasts a minimum of seven days, but may be extended if the resident is deemed resistant. There's this quiet and safety room that's also, if for a deemed resistant patient will have to stay. Okay. An extreme punishment used by Project Patch was called Faze. During this punishment, the teens are forced to stay in the wilderness for between seven and forty days, where they are stripped of whatever minimal privileges they had, uh, recently been granted. The days are, uh, the days in punishment are spent either hiking for miles, sometimes in a circle, kinda reminds me of the trail system that they have, or performing forced manual labor such as digging large ditches, chopping wood, removing piles from rock from one place to another. At night, they are forbidden from sleeping in any clothing except for their underwear as an attempt to dissuade them from running away. During this time, they are forbidden from reading any books except the Bible and are required to prepare, eat, and clean up all, all three meals, uh, within thirty minutes each. I could go through this, but one of the survivors, I know Mr. Mathis had read some of the statements that are around there, but this one survivor does talk about the use of ropes course. And the ropes course, and it's just one of the highlights of this, our, our task was a ropes course where he had to walk on several steel tight ropes spanning thirty feet, six, suspended six feet off the ground. It would not be complete until every student got across in succession without falling or we would all have to start over. The students, the students would have to wait their turn and spot the students walking in case they fell. Many of our group were far from athletic. It took us months to complete. We were all put on work crew until we finished back. So I'm not gonna go through the rest of it, but I'm gonna compare it with their mission statement, because there's some highlights in their mission statement that was originally put out. The likenesses are, it's a Christ-centered residential environment, this is their words, dabbling in alcohol, drugs, disrespect, oppositional defiance, and running away. It was also addressed about the security issue, key fob security. And I want to make a point at this point, if, if it's, at this time, is if a patient were to walk away, they would probably have good reason to, in my opinion. So here under safety and security, the applicants put forth, they said, transporters to bring resistant patient, patients to the facility safely, that they would use drones. Well, you know, I'm a pilot, you know, it takes a while to master a little bit of the drone thing, especially if you haven't operated in something like that in a while. So they get restraint training. On their physical fitness activities, I highlighted the fact that they use, one of them is ropes course. So they have the same kind of thing. Steel ropes, so you hit it off the ground, I don't know, but it sounds the same, right? Chopping wood, all right? So when I'm looking at this, from a dad who successfully raised his son, looking out my window at the same exact piece of property out there, I wonder to myself the way my son was treated versus the way these other children of the same age group at that time were treated. And I think to myself, if I treated my son this way and my neighbor saw this, why wouldn't that be considered some sort of maltreatment? I want to thank all the neighbors who have come together. Uh, grown to really respect a lot of them that have put a lot of effort in this, the ones who came here, uh, last time, and I think that, uh, from this point forward, I've, because we have a minute nine seconds left, uh, I, I could read my statement, uh, about, uh, the reason why this, uh, uh, this whole process should not have occurred to begin with, in my opinion. We shouldn't have not even gotten to this point. The recommendations were clear by, uh, um, community development for the reasons for denial. The council for one of the neighbors has also made clear that the, it failed in certain areas as well. Um, and with all due respect to everybody here and to the applicants, um, I stand with my family in opposition, uh, to this proposed facility for all the reasons that's stated by all of these wonderful people, including the people that are online. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay. I have, this is my stack of people who are opposed but were donating time. Sean McAllister. Bart Otisson. Jonah Greenaw. I apologize if I mispronounce your names, sometimes it's your handwriting I can't read. However, you kind of made two checkmarks on yours. It says you're opposed, you're donating time, and you may wish to speak, it can't be both.
Donated.
Okay. Ashner, Asher Goodner, opposed and donated time. Carmen Jasper, opposed, donated time. Ronan Burns, opposed, donated time. Melody Burns, opposed, donated time. Dan Ost, Dane Ost, opposed, donating time. Joel Rose, opposed, donating time. Blake Ost, opposed, donating time. Barbara Hansen, opposed, donating time. Jess Isbell, opposed, donating time. Samuel Mathis, opposed, donating time. Brishen Gregorio, opposed, donating time. Amber Gregorio, opposed, donating time. W K E S I C, opposed, donating time, but also said may wish to speak. Can't be both. Maybe they're not here anymore. Cheryl Ishbell, opposed, donating time. Ally Mathis, opposed, donating time. Carrie Mathis, opposed, donating time. Desiree Low, opposed, donating time. Carrie Rome, opposed, donating time. Claire Burns, opposed, does not wish to speak. Bill Jasper, um, doesn't say whether you're in favor, neutral, or opposed, it says you may wish to speak. I have Merna Rasmussen, opposed, donating time. Michael De Pasquale, opposed, donating time. Lance Jordan, opposed, donating time.
I said they're all opposed.
Okay, so Bill Jasper, are you here?
Opposed.
And that you may wish to speak.
I, I'll donate.
Thank you. And then I have... Selena McAllister, opposed, may wish to speak. Selena McAllister. Okay. Leland Lewis, opposed, may wish to speak.
Thank you for your service. Okay.
Name and address, please.
Uh, Leland Lewis, ten nineteen South Wolf Lodge Creek Road, Coeur d'Alene. I first came to North Idaho in nineteen fifty-two. I've seen a lot of things. I had the privilege to talk to a man that drove stagecoach from Murray, Idaho to Wallace. So the reason I mention this is what I've seen in my eighty-five years. In country disappearing. That's a sad thing, to look out over the prairies and the hillsides and see nothing but rooftops, and yet it's our fellow man. I would like to bring, uh, one, one subject here related to, to Living Waters and the relationship to their footprint that they desire in Wolf Lodge. For many years, I've supported Union Gospel Mission, and the footprint that they have is so small, but the dozens and dozens of men, women, and children that they help, it's a fantastic thing that they've done. And I don't understand why Living Waters would have to have such a large complex to do the same thing. It looks like more of an entertainment center. Yes, these people need help. I listened to some of the, uh, pro advocates, uh, the attorneys, the real estate people, the residents that are, are pro Living Waters, that, uh, I just, I think there's something missing. And I, I look up on the wall behind you, Mrs. Woodward, and I see in God we trust, and not once have I heard the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, our Creator and Savior, mentioned in all these conversations, even from those that are advocates in helping young people. I recall driving from Athel, Idaho in nineteen sixty-three to Sandpoint, saw four cars on the highway. That's what country means to me, and to a lot of the people out here in Wolf Lodge, and I hope that we can retain that country atmosphere. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica Ost, opposed, may wish to speak.
Uh, my name is Jessica Ost. I live at one seven two four one East Alder Creek Road. I am also, um, an adjoining neighbor, um, who continues to be ignored because I'm in opposition, as well as my family. I have some public comments to submit here, um, as well as one that I submitted late, asking the applicants to, um, explain how else they've, uh, reached out to the community. My family received a letter and an email invite to the steakhouse dinner. Um, never, anything else, not a letter, an email, a phone call, was never approached. Again, my family lives on an adjoining parcel. In the exhibits, they put a letter that gives the impression that they mailed letters to residents concerning the cancellation of the dinner at the steakhouse with an offer to speak with residents further about the project. I never received that letter, and I would be really curious to know how many residents here also received that letter. Or anyone that was contacted further than the invite. Um, I'd also like to say, I hope that during these presentations, you take a little bit of time and you look out at the crowd and you read people's faces... of time and you look out at the crowd and you read people's faces, or when you see loud laughing outbursts specifically by the Doties here, when that poor woman was telling her story about her daughter at Project Patch and the abuse that she suffered there, or the abuse stories that Mr. Whipple just shared, these people were laughing.
Not true.
Out loud.
No comments from the gallery, please.
Out loud, multiple people from this area were laughing. And the children sitting behind them said out loud, "These people don't even care."
Director, your comments to me, please.
When they laughed out loud. So I hope that you're paying attention. Maybe you'll go back and watch the video, but they're laughing out loud at the abuse of children. And I think that that speaks volumes to their character.
Thank you for your testimony. H E 2007. Michael Elsberg, opposed, may wish to speak.
No.
Nope. Okay. Are you Michael?
Yep.
Okay, we've got him. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Michael D. Elsberg, and I live at 14389 East Alder Creek Road, Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. Now, before I start, I'm going to let everyone know that I am old enough, as the thing says, and I am not speaking on somebody's behalf when I was not told to.
No laughing.
Now, this, when she says, when she chose this location, they chose a place in wilderness where there are animals. In fact, in 2021, there was a mountain lion sighted three times, killing many of our livestock. And in 2022, we've lost a goat, a cow, and some more, a lot of chickens. And just this year, a mountain lion has been sighted three times, a couple wolves. And we have lost more, some pigs and more chickens. Also, when she said that when, when they, if they do escape, they are near the National Forest, and if they do walk in, then they, well, if they do escape and go in there, there are a lot of hunters who will shoot and who could easily mistake them for an animal, because sometimes it is dark in there, there's a lot of overgrown trees. And there are a lot of animals also who may, who will try, will attack to get a good meal. And I, we have seen a mountain lion up close, and they would not miss it. Also, they... Come on. Don't know what to do. Yeah, sorry. There are also... Sorry, I forgot what I said.
It's okay.
And, ah, come on. And I'll just, sorry.
Thank you very much. Good job. Harold Williams, opposed, may wish to speak.
Harold Williams? Ms. Jones? There's a big delay.
Yeah. It's like I'm hearing myself. Greg Shrimp, opposed, wishes to speak.
Good evening. My name is Greg Shrimp. My wife and I both live at 5549 South Wolf Lodge Creek Road, Coeur d'Alene. I would like to expand on the water issue that was brought forth by Cassie Ryder. I'll talk about aquifers first. The Spokane Valley Rathrum Prairie Aquifer is basically a large underground lake that provides drinking water for more than 450,000 people. It's a gift from God. Unfortunately, Wolf Lodge does not sit over the top of that aquifer. The source of our drinking water is groundwater. Cougar Gulch, which sits to the west of Wolf Lodge, also does not sit above the aquifer. Like us, they also rely on groundwater for their wells. Due to growth issues and large quantity of wells being drilled in that area, existing wells, a lot of them are now drying up. It's such an acute issue that Cootenay County Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended the rezoning of Cougar Gulch into larger parcels. Does that help the existing wells? Not really. Their main option is drilling their wells, existing wells deeper, which could cost in the tens of thousands of dollars if they could even find water. Sometimes a dry well could stay a dry well. In 1994, the South Tahoe Public Utility District, which is a quote "public water system," drilled a new well in the Al Tahoe area. This was great for the utility district, but it adversely affected 45 neighboring private wells. The minimum effects were discoloration of the water to wells drying up. The interesting part of this history is that a hydro-geological evaluation was completed before this well was drilled, but the evaluation did not foresee any of these problems. We do know that the DEQ is requiring a public water system to be installed at this location. At this time, we don't know the size of the future domestic water system, but the term "public water system" tells me all I need to know about the potential fate of the neighboring wells in Wolf Lodge. The Cootenay County Fire and Rescue District is requiring a fire suppression system for this project, which includes a six-inch minimum water main. I guess I'm done?
Sorry about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don Cox, opposed, wishes to speak.
I'm Don Cox. My husband Steve and I own the property at 16318 East Alder Creek Road. Our property adjoins the subject property. After the last meeting, the applicant stated that they would be reaching out to many of the neighbors. And at the beginning of this evening, Jennifer stated that they have spent the last four months meeting with many people, but obviously didn't feel it was important to reach out to us, one of their neighbors with adjoining property, as we have yet to be contacted by them. The applicant has stated multiple times about the ways they will operate their business to mitigate many of the concerns the neighbors have expressed. This includes the level of the risk of the residents, staffing above required levels, scheduling of activities, ways to lessen traffic, and even the way they're going to light their property. Our concern is that all of these things they have stated they will do are voluntary. They're not required by any laws or rules or regulations. These are things they're saying they will go above and beyond to do. If this CUP is approved and they do not do these things, I doubt there is anything I can do as a neighbor that I can do to force them to keep these rules or to keep the things that they said they would do. The other concern I have is that they are building a very large facility that will not transition well to other uses that are compatible with the area in the event that they are not successful. If they go out of business, if they sell the property, what will it be used for in the future? Also, I just want to state that regarding real estate value, we bought our property in 2018, and if Living Water Youth Ranch was next door at that time, we would not have bought our property. That's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Burns, opposed, wishes to speak.
Hello. My name is Michael Burns, and I live at 7344 East Borley Road, Coeur d'Alene. I'm an RN with over 30 years of experience. I am currently employed with the Veterans Administration, and I help to provide services to veterans who have experienced mental health crises due to PTSD, depression, anxiety, suicidal and homicidal ideation, as well as other psychiatric and physical illness. I've also worked with adults and adolescents in a mental health setting and have witnessed firsthand some of the problems these patients deal with on a daily basis. Many of these programs start the day with goal-setting. The following are typical examples of daily goals of just a few of the youth I've observed. Hello, my name is Jason. My goal for the day is to not have any thoughts of cutting my wrists. Hello, my name is Carson, and my goal for the day is to not have any thoughts of shooting my family to death. Hello, my name is Emma, and my goal for the day is to not have any thoughts of stabbing my mom's boyfriend for sexually abusing me. Hello, my name is Cara, and my goal for the day is to not have any suicidal thoughts. The vast majority of these patients have experienced physical, emotional, and/or sexual abuse, and many of those who were abused will go on to become abusers. The vast majority of them have substance abuse and alcohol problems. Although these patients need help, a remote location without immediate access to emergency services is not the appropriate location for such a facility. These youths are frequently at high risk for harming themselves and others. Typically, a residential care facility offers very little help to these patients. Additionally, most of these people are scarred for life, so it is disingenuous to pretend that they do not pose a significant risk to the surrounding community and the families who live there. The erection of this facility would be putting the local community in harm's way. This is not a low-risk population, as stated by the proponents. Thank you.
Thank you. Martha Cook, opposed, wishes to speak.
Good evening. My name is Martha Cook, 2503 West Presley Road, Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. So I live on the other water-challenged area, the Micah Flats area. I applaud the man who spoke about water shortages because that's facing our county in all of the areas of the county that are not over the aquifer. But my points tonight, I'll try to be fast. I went through the 2020 comp plan again today, and under the section on economic development, element D, determined through a public process, this is one of the policies, the future compatibility of additional commercial and/or industrial development within the unincorporated areas of the county. And I think that's what we have to look at tonight, future compatibility, actually present compatibility. Another goal that I looked at, under element land use, this is in that section called Goals, Objectives, and Policies, foster existing rural communities and character by encouraging land uses to be consistent with existing development and allowing commercial uses that serve local residents and harmonize with these communities. And under the policies for that goal or that objective, policy three, commercial development in rural communities should serve local residents and harmonize with communities. I talked to Mr. Ryder, and I think there's something like 300, roughly 300 homes, possibly 600 to 700 residents in Wolf Lodge. And I don't know that, I don't know if you would find a continuing market of at-risk youth in that immediate community. I believe this is a regional facility, if not a statewide facility, and it's not appropriate to add it to a rural community that is so definitely agricultural and single-family dwellings. I'm sorry, I'm a little, I haven't done this in a couple of years. Objective three, still under Goals, Objectives, and Policies, single-family and multifamily individual residences, adopt policies that maintain rural residential characteristics found in the county. Policy, under policy, under objective five, commercial development, under policy one, allow limited commercial development which complements and preserves rural character and has adequate infrastructure. And just above that, objective five, commercial development could be permitted in unincorporated areas of the county where adequate public infrastructure and transportation corridors are or will be available, and where such development complements the surrounding character. Thank you.
Selena McAllister, opposed, may wish to speak.
Let's say when you're calling.
I'm sorry?
You're calling.
Okay.
Is there Selena McAllister coming on?
No. Okay. Then who do we have on Zoom?
Madam Chair, there's a handful of people that have not given up their time and may wish to speak. I'll just start at the top. Amy Mashburn, would you want to unmute yourself and say anything at this time? How about Mrs. Rockwell?
Yeah, my name is Jamie Rockwell. I live at 1 South Elder Creek Road. And after watching Scott and Doty's smirks and complete disregard and disrespect for my neighbors, friends, and family over the last few hours, I am more opposed to this corporation tax write-off, dress, and adventure camp for children and their parents than ever. I do not support it in my neighborhood.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
There's a Parmentier, P-A-R-M-A-N-T-I-E-R. Do you wish to speak?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
My name is Dominic Parmentier. Address 14079 West Berry Avenue, Post Falls. Registered civil engineer in the state of Idaho, a board member for East Green Acres Irrigation District, and a member of the Aquifer Protection Board. And while this proposed cup involves property that's not over the aquifer, I would like to oppose it based on the impact to the water, as well as the impact from the septic systems that would be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last person I see that might want to speak is R Whig, R-W-H-I-G. If you wish to speak, you'll need to unmute yourself.
So I figured out how to unmute myself, if that's okay? It's Amy Mashburn.
Yes.
Okay, let me figure it out. I'm not super tech savvy, but I am a former Patch kid.
Name and address for the record, please.
Okay, Amy Mashburn, France, and my address is 165 Lighthouse Drive, Vallejo, California, 94590. So I am a former Patch kid. I lived through what everybody is talking about, and it's really hard for it to come back up. And I'm sorry if I cry, because I still wake up screaming in the middle of the night and I haven't seen these people for almost 12 years. I was at Project Patch from 2010, August 10th of 2010 to August 6th of 2011. I was there four days short of a solid year because I got pushed out because I had another boarding school waiting to take me in. Now, they're not kidding when they tell you that we go through a lot, and then wanting to emulate Patch is really hard for people to, like me, to accept because we went through so much there. Like the Wilderness Program is not a joke. A kid sent himself up a tree for 40 days or something like that because he didn't want to be out there and the staff couldn't convince him to go down. When they finally got him out of the tree, they sent him home because they couldn't do anything else for him. They told me if I would have just jumped out the window in the office at Project Patch, that I would have been sent home because they wouldn't have known what to do with me. We had kids run and they got punished. I was put in a quiet room, which was a lone room with a bed on the floor, mattress on the floor, with a glass door and a light, and that was it. I had none of my clothes, I had nobody to talk to, I was alone for a week. They kept me in that room, so I couldn't talk to anybody else. They told me over and over again how I was a problem. They had my mother believing that I was a nuisance and that I was not worth loving. And that's not fair. That's not something that you teach kids. You teach kids that they're worth something, and they deserve to be told that they're loved and that they're not a problem, and that even though they might have PTSD and anxiety and ADHD, they're lovable, they're workable at home. You can find a really good therapist in your home area and work on it as a family unit. Project Patch did as much as they could to squish my mom out of the situation. When I was out at Wilderness and I had to build my own shelter and I got to live in my long john and no tennis shoes, I had literally, we were given flip flops to go out in and it snowed because they didn't care, they didn't want us to run. They were more afraid that we were going to run from the program than learn something.
Amy, your time is up. I'm sorry, but your time is up.
Oh, sorry, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, but it's, yeah.
Anybody else on Zoom? Okay, and I think we may have somebody back there that we might have missed. You were out of the room, yes?
I signed the paper, but for whatever reason, it didn't make it. I'm Michael Burns Jr.
Do you need one?
I got it, yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you for hearing us. My name is Michael Burns. My mailing address on there is 11401 East Kempton Road, but I actually live up Varnum. My address where I live is 3661 South Varnum Road. I'm about two miles from where they intend to build this youth ranch, whatever you want to call it. I come from a family with 11 children, and that was from one man and one woman who were married the whole time. And I went to private school and I also worked in private school, and now I'm a father with two children and one on the way, so all I'm saying is I've seen kids for a lot of years now, even though I'm only 30 years old. But anyways, I worked at a school in Elmhurst Township, Pennsylvania. It was a private school. It wasn't for troubled kids. It was a high school, grades nine through 12, and their focus was on a well-rounded individual. They didn't take any troubled kids. Any of the young students there were from, they had no criminal record, they even had recommendations from their pastors. They needed multiple recommendations, as a matter of fact, including one from a pastor, so they all had Christian backgrounds. So my point was, these were quote-unquote "good" kids. But kids are humans and humans do what humans do. And I'll tell you what happened at a school that had quote-unquote "good" kids. Well, in the one year that I worked there, and I was what they called a dorm father, so effectively I was right there with the kids. I had my own bedroom, but of course I was there to help them through their day and just try to maintain some semblance of order. In the one year that I was there, these are some of the things that happened with these quote-unquote "good" kids. Attempted homosexual rape. Well, we sent that kid home the next day on airplane. There was assaulting the staff. There was some kid, good kid, so to speak. I say he was a punk. He was in the kitchen stealing food and I told him to get out. Well, he punched me. There was another young kid, and he was a black fellow, and that really has nothing to do with it, but he was a freshman and some of the older kids thought it would be a fun game to have him hold some baking trays, aluminum baking trays. And as he did that, they took knives and all kinds of stuff from the kitchen utensils and they were throwing it at him. Of course, it was just a good game. I told him to get the heck out of the kitchen, and they didn't really respect me, but that was that. So there was another kid, he was on the rugby team and he asked to go for a jog on the weekend. Well, he was jogging six miles every way to the nearest convenience store to buy cigarettes. They would bring alcohol to school and sometimes we'd find them when they were puking in the dorms, breaking in the neighbors' houses, stealing staff members' vehicles. I see them out of time. Thank you, these were good kids.
Thank you. Okay, I think we've gotten everybody who signed paperwork. So that concludes our public testimony for this evening. I recommend we take a little stretch break and then we'll come back for applicant rebuttal. Five minutes?
Agreed.
Where is my staff?
All right, we are reconvening for rebuttal.
Good evening, Madam Hearing Commissioner, Hearing Examiner, pardon me.
Name and address, please.
Right, Rick Harthian, I'm on a tourney with Ramston Marfus in Coeur d'Alene, 700 Northwest Boulevard, in Coeur d'Alene, A3814. It's important to contextualize tonight's lengthy comments under the Cootney County Code. And, once you do so, you appreciate the fact that the youth ranch can immediately proceed with constructing several group homes as a matter of legal right under the Cootney County Code. To be clear, this is serving the same purpose as a residential care facility. This is serving the same intended residence. And, I'll walk you through the various provisions that speak to that. Under Cootney County Code 8.6.103, large parcels at or exceeding 40 acres can be divided into smaller parcels of at least 20 acres as a matter of legal right. Here, the ranch's property is 73 acres. What that entails is that it could be divided into three parcels of approximately 24 acres each, again, as a matter of right. Under Cootney County Code 8.2205, a single-family dwelling can be constructed on each rural parcel of at least five acres as a matter of legal right. Correspondingly, under Cootney County Code 8.9203, single-family dwellings are expressly inclusive of group homes. So, another way, group homes are effectively, pardon me, in addition to that is the fact that group homes are effectively the same as residential care facilities by the definitions provided under the Cootney County Code. Now, what's the difference? Group homes limit each group home to eight residents receiving treatment for disability. Residential care facilities set a floor of nine residents. And, as Jennifer will speak to, that they comport with one another because, again, the youth ranch is seeking to service 24 kids. Now, what's important is the clear appreciation that a construction, while a construction of a residential care facility does require a CUP under 8.208 of the Cootney County Code, again, group homes do not require a CUP. Thus, as a matter of legal right, the ranch is allowed to construct a group home on each of the three subdivided parcels. So, the question turns, why would we proceed, or why would the youth ranch proceed with a CUP? And, the answer is, it's twofold. One is the practical, economic, and efficient considerations of having one facility, one building, as opposed to having three distinct buildings, and what that would entail, not only in terms of constructing it, but also just operating three different facilities. Secondly, and I think it's important, given the nature of the comments tonight, is the fact that through the CUP procedure, the youth ranch has effectively tried to gain the county's participation, has tried to gain the input of surrounding neighbors in terms of how to proceed with this project, and how to do so in the right way. And, that's an important consideration, because, again, under the Cootney County Code, they didn't need to do this. They could have proceeded with three distinct group homes and gone that way, but they decided to go ahead and engage the county and engage the people in terms of really fleshing this issue out. Now, given that, it's important to turn attention to some of the conditions of approval that were set forth in the staff report. One of the conditions of approval that raised some concern was Condition 8.14, which speaks to the boundary line adjustment. That appears to be a material issue, because my understanding is that some sort of agreement has been reached with a neighboring parcel at issue in terms of resolving that issue. If that's not correct, I'll defer to Jennifer on that point. The next issue is Condition 8.20. And, the issue with Condition 8.20 is that it sets a troubling precedent, in the sense that it really adds on to the contemplation of the state legislature in terms of promulgating applicable law and setting forth the authority to oversee these facilities specifically with the Department of Health and Welfare. And, once again, Jennifer raised the point earlier, IDAPA is replete in terms of the regulations of group homes and residential care facilities. So, the trouble with 8.2, and why we respectfully request it to be withdrawn from a legal perspective, is it could be tacitly used in terms of determining who can and cannot receive treatment, the disabilities that such treatments could be provided in regards to, and the nature of those treatments. And, again, that's a dangerous precedent to set when these issues have been fully fleshed out by the state legislature. Unless you have any questions for me, I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer. Thank you.
Thank you. First, I want to start by saying that I am absolutely sympathetic to the traumatic experiences of the patch residents and their families, and those types of traumatic circumstances absolutely never should have happened. I just wanted to point out that our plan is not to replicate their mistakes, and we are going to be taking the good aspects of the program and eliminating those that do not model what we represent. Like we said in our testimony, that we are most closely modeling after Project Patch, not exactly modeling after Project Patch. Our son was at Project Patch, and this is why we chose to model our program. It was an excellent program, and I am not diminishing anybody's claims. He got his GED while he was there during that time. He had excellent therapy provided, excellent outdoor experiences, there was a strong family component, the staff was always professional, and by law, by IDAPA code, they have to have licensed professionals there. So, I'm not quite sure about the testimony. I would question some of those things that were shared. As a residential care facility, they are held to the letter of the law, otherwise they lose their state licensure. So, they had to have had licensed therapists there during that time, as well as the CEO and the chief administrator. There is specified criteria that they have to meet, and it is extensive education as well as experience. So, they would not be able to just take a fishing guide and put him into a chief administrative or a CEO role, not at all. And, that is in the IDAPA code for your review. Let's see here. I want to start by addressing the claims about being in it for the money. We are not a for-profit organization. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and we chose that designation for a reason. We plan to raise money to help families who cannot afford our program, and yes, these programs are expensive. It is very expensive to run a children's residential care facility. We do work with the CPA, and we've run operating expenses that will most likely exceed $1.3 million. And, at full capacity, our annual revenue generated will be roughly $1.8 million. That is not a lot of margin. And, even if there is, whatever is left over will be reinvested back into the program or go towards scholarships for the children who cannot afford it. We are not allowed to maintain a profit. Also, nonprofits cannot be sold. They have to be either disseminated or given to a like nonprofit, and there are very strict rules governing that. Our most immediate neighbors, we had reached out to, and the 98 acres that's directly next to us is in favor of our project, as they have stated. The national forest is down our entire left boundary line, I-90 is below. The neighbors, I had asked Jeff, who's the real estate agent, there are portions of neighbors that touch the tip of our property, but they're way back over the hill, like thousands of yards, is that?
Thousands of feet.
Thousands of feet. So, we only sent out a request to join us for the community dinner to those who had sent in their public comment forms, whose email addresses we had, and I can't remember how many there were in there, I think it was like 97 of them. So, all of those neighbors did get the letter to the community dinner. Let's see here. You know, I also looked at Project Patch, and they only have eight reviews, and I would imagine that most of those are the negative reviews. Honestly, that's not a terrible track record since 1984, to have eight negative reviews, even if all of them were negative. And, I believe that was just a Google search, there may be other reviews on other search engines, but that was the one that I had seen. Safety concerns, you know, it is very obvious to us that the most extreme cases have been addressed here. You know, they took the most egregious circumstances that have happened and highlighted those, and I want you to know nationally, that is not the norm. Traditionally, these are very safe facilities. We are not under some foolish impression that there won't be incidents, because there will. However, when they were talking about, let's see, I wrote it down here, I just want to make sure. When they were talking about the runaways, you really can't make a distinction between runaways. It doesn't automatically equal harm to the community or property crimes just because they run away. So, the statistics that we had addressed previously had to do with harm to the community and property crimes, because that was what was raised mostly at the last hearing. So, that's what we were addressing. Also, we should not be penalized because of long response times by the sheriff. These children deserve a place to receive treatment. I don't know, you know, how much farther out we could go, I would presume that no matter where we go, we're going to run into challenges. Some of the examples about the summer camps, those mainly had to do with response times and bad road conditions, that's why we had highlighted the summer camps. But, you know, summer camp children do not come without their troubles as well, they have the same ability to wander away. But, the reason that we had highlighted summer camps was for response times and bad road conditions, because you look at the road conditions of those two facilities, I would be assuming that they had received a CUP in some capacity. So, my question is, why wasn't it raised as an issue then? As far as lifelike in adverse weather conditions, they're not going to be our only method of safety. Cootney County Fire and Rescue has annexed us into services, and then we will also have medical personnel and apparatus onsite. Per IDAPA code, we are required to have first aid certified and CPR certified personnel onsite at all times, no exception. That's per IDAPA code. Let's see here. I'm just looking at what's actually worth addressing in the last moment here. I wanted to say that all of our admin roles are mostly going to be in town, at our office in town, so a lot of those administrative roles do not count in the calculation of onsite staff. And, finally, traffic to five-acre parcels, in my estimation, would generate much more traffic than our facility would. We also have an educational director to ensure criteria is met. They had raised the 2.5 hours per day, but we also have a slot designated later in the evening where they have one hour focused as well toward the schoolwork. But, again, we have the educational director that's going to ensure the criteria is met. So, I think that's all that I have for now, so thank you for your time.
Okay, I have some questions. So, did I hear you correctly that you sent out an RFP for property owners to submit their sites to you for consideration in Cootney County?
I'm sorry, what?
Did you send out, did I hear you say you sent out an RFP, or something along those lines, to property owners in Cootney County to find this location? And, these people?
That was a request through the MLS, Chain's Airings and Agents, so that was a request through our email system. I made the request for a good site for a youth ranch. He responded with his own personal property and said, hey, this is an option for you.
And, it wasn't even on the market.
Did you get other responses?
There were other options. We were considering, you know, up north, as far as Segal and Carywood, South Fork, Worley on 95, we considered all locations.
Harrison?
Yeah, I mean Harrison, a lot of locations were considered. When it comes to this, you know, the characteristics of this location, US Forest Service is huge, backing up to I-90 is a protection, the 73 and a half acres, the privacy being elevated like it is offers so much privacy for us and for neighbors. The neighbors that didn't get contacted, Cox and OST, they are literally, well, OST is across Alder Creek Road, and Cox is several thousand yards, I would say, away, down a hill, and there's no influence that direction.
On the steep part of our property?
Yeah, I mean, we purposely contacted and focused on Trevor Stone, who's right across from the entrance, because he would see it, and obviously, our east property owner being the spikers, and then Mark Mathis is 2,700 feet up the road, he can't see us either. So...
But, we did contact him.
You know, Southern California's had a, in rain terms, you'd call it 100-year flood conditions, but they've had snow that has caused them to be snowed in for a very, very long time. No food, no electricity, no cellphone. I think you have to plan for that kind of an issue.
Absolutely. And, in IDAPA code, they do. They have all sorts of safety mechanisms, they're going to require things like generators and, you know, safety precautions like that. That's all in the IDAPA code. We have residential staff housing that's there. A condition of employment would be that they understand that there may be times where they're staying overnight. That would just be a known upon hire.
I spent a good amount of time, both as a family member and also as an ombuds person for assisted living facilities and memory care. And, they have codes as well, that the state requires them to follow. And, I can tell you that whatever their good intentions were, staffing problems exist, and there were many times that the requirements that they must follow were not met. There were pages and pages and pages of failure to comply that the state inspectors or the ombuds people would list.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, there are some definite natural challenges that we have to overcome, there is no question about that. And, these are things that we take into consideration, and we do not take those considerations lightly. We have done a lot of risk assessment and tried our best to measure, you know, what is good and right and true for these kids versus the risk, and the reward wins every single time. Yes, we will have challenges. Sometimes, we might have to fight to overcome those challenges, but I can assure you, our team is up for the task.
This is a subject that seems to get a lot of attention these days. What about, I mean, you've got girls dorm, boys dorm, what about children who identify differently?
Yes. We actually have some of our policy written in by our attorney that's in our bylaws, and so what they identify at, upon birth, they will be placed according to birth certificate upon birth.
Have you actually closed on your purchase contract?
No, we have not. If we were the property owners, we would have made that clear, we're not trying to deceive anybody.
We do have an accepted contract, an accepted offer, under contract, dependent on CUP approval.
Okay, thank you. In the case file, there were some comments that when they're out hiking, or snowshoeing, or doing their maintenance on the grounds and so forth, there might be axes and handguns. Can you res-
Hands guns?
Yeah.
They're not allowed at a children's residential care facility?
I wouldn't think so, but I thought that somewhere you guys had said that that might be a requirement to have, what about axes and hammers and...
I'm thinking chopping wood, you know, that would be under strict supervision, obviously. We're not just going to hand an axe to somebody.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Slide, yeah.
I know it's very late in the evening, but I was hoping to clarify a point that was raised by the applicant's legal counsel, if that's okay.
Please, absolutely.
And then perhaps have the applicant's legal counsel give a short draw-up, staff's further statements.
The applicant's legal counsel brought forth some concerns with respect to condition of approval, and it's on the screen, 8.20, which states, "The facility shall not accept any residents with a juvenile conviction other than a status offense. The applicant shall maintain a record of all of the residents within the facility and make it available to Cootney County Community Development at all times." Perhaps legal counsel can elaborate further on the legal terminology of a status offense, but after consulting with our legal counsel, Deputy Prosecutor Pat Braden, it was explained to us that it's a noncriminal offense, somebody running away. One of the reasons why we, as a department, felt that adding condition of approval 8.20, as well as condition of approval 8.19, that states, "In the event the facility operated becomes aware of the resident leaving the facility, staff shall contact the Cootney County Sheriff's Office forthwith." And then, there's another condition that was originally inserted into the report with having a perimeter fence. We understand, I had a conversation at length with Mr. Doty, and I really appreciated having that conversation with him, because it, we discussed the possibility of this facility, or the request for this facility being denied, and some of the options that the applicant had. And, I think the legal counsel for the applicant made it very clear, they do have an option to go through a subdivision exemption process and create 20-plus acre parcels of land and construct residential structures on each one of those and make them group homes. It's a by right use, I want to make it very clear, that it's a by right use for them to have a group home in a residential structure. In essence, the outcome could be the same as with a conditional use permit, but the only difference is that it will be in three separate structures that could be closely placed together, in, you know, keeping in mind all the setbacks within the rural zone. Our attempt to add these conditions of approval was to, perhaps, if the board, or the hearing examiner and the board were to approve this, that there would be some benefit in having these conditions to address the potential risk of runaways or some other, you know, activities that could arise from children leaving the facility due to breach of security. So, while we did make a recommendation of denial, these conditions were put in place to assist you, as well as the board, in understanding that there may be some benefits if this was approved with these conditions versus being denied, and ultimately having them construct three separate residences on three separate structures, and having three separate group homes with the outcome being the same impact on the community. I want to kind of make that very clear on the record for the public, as well as you, and if it's appropriate, perhaps legal counsel for the applicant can rebut staff's testimony or provide further clarification.
Thank you for that.
May I speak to one of those? Any time of...
Sure, come on.
Any time a resident comes missing from the facility, it is in the IDAPA code that we immediately notify the sheriff, and that is per code.
Okay.
I appreciate the points that were recently made, or just made, and that's precisely the point that I wanted to make as well, that by choosing to go through the CUP process, the youth ranch wanted to, again- process, the youth ranch wanted to, again, engage the county and engage the community in terms of really deciphering how to formulate this in a way that is mindful of the neighbors, the area, the operation of the county as a general matter. So those points are correct, and that was exactly what I was trying to suggest earlier, what I was stating earlier, that, a- again, the pathway of proceeding with fairly minimal differences, um, i- in the context of a group home as opposed to our residential care facility, is, you know, on paper, sure, there's some costs and inefficiencies by going that route, but the pathway was there, the pathway was clear. Um, there's, there's a handful of conditions that were suggested by staff, and it, it should not be lost that, in substance, only one was really discussed. And the concern was really one of a, a public policy issue that's contemplative of issues in terms of parsing out i- if certain disabilities are going to be restricted or limited in terms of treatment against other disabilities, and to, to what extent that provision spoke to that issue, in, while being mindful that, once again, there's IDAPA regulations pertaining to this, there's, you know, state governmental oversight pertaining to these very issues, and the need to overextend and to impose or suggest additional super obligations beyond those, there, there's some legal, there's some issues that are legally questionable in that regard, and, you know, merit discussion at this point, or at least merit mentioning in terms of highlighting those factors moving forward. Um, but the spirit of what Mr. Finkel said certainly shouldn't be lost, and again, the, the fact that we really raised issue with only one of them in substance, I, I think should reflect the fact that, again, the youth ranch is more than willing to in- incorporate the county's suggestions in terms of really, how, how to effectively pursue this project, and to, to create a facility that is really beneficial from a very macro perspective.
Um, if you did three separate care homes-
Sure.
Um, would you approach security differently?
I would.
No, everything would be exactly the same. We care about the community, our residents, our staff, all of the above.
And the point to kind of bear in mind is the fact that, just from an operative perspective, when you have one building, as opposed to three, there's an argument to be made that the oversight would be better in that regard, and there would be an incremental difference in that sense as well. With no clear benefit of requiring three distinct buildings aside from slavish adherence to, to code, and out of necessity because of that. Really, it's a question of pragmatism and efficiencies in economies, while being mindful of what the Cootney County Code provides, and being mindful of, again, what's beneficial to all.
May I add to your question?
Okay.
Um, we are bound by IDAPA code, whether we go the residential care facility or the group home facility, so our operating approach is not going to change at all, we're still bound by IDAPA either way. There's just extra levels of accountability for us with a CUP, obviously. Yeah, and, and I, I really, I don't agree that eight twenty, um, I think that that's an unreasonable condition, and we went to great lengths to express that we are not taking any violent criminals or sex offenders, but to be limited to status offenses only, um, I, I do not believe that that's a reasonable condition. There are good kids out there who have disabilities that have made decisions that would fall under criminal activity, they do not deserve to be excluded. It might be a petty theft or something like that.
Okay, David, did you have something you want to add?
Just for the sake of the audience, the reason why our code allows group homes of a beta pure has to do with federal law, and has been in place for over twenty years, that I'm familiar with, which federal law has said that municipalities shall not prohibit group homes in residential areas. So every zoning code in this country allows what we allow. I think frankly, it is a loophole in our code, that we haven't parsed together, that you can do these twenty acre splits, which are not subdivisions, they're divisions allowed as an exemption, and in this case, it works as legal counsel advised. That's something I'll take up with my legal counsel about a possible code amendment, but for now, it is in fact the case, that they can do as has been described, and I would just lay that squarely at the feet of our federal government.
Okay.
And if I might add, a- again, proceeding that route would have none of the protections and benefits of these conditional use restrictions. Thank you.
Vlad, nothing else?
If the app, if, if you were to potentially recommend approval, can you have the applicant elaborate on how, instead of eliminating condition eight point two zero, how could they modify it to limit the types of residents that would be accepted into this facility? There has to be, there have to be s- there has to be some sort of a, um, not threshold, but sideboards that would limit the type of children that would be taken in, if it's something beyond status offense that, like petty crime, like Ms. Scott has stated, if you were considering potentially recommending approval, then I think it would be prudent for you to request that the applicant suggest modifying condition of approval eight point two zero versus eliminating it. Sorry, I'm losing my thoughts, it's kind of late, but if, if, if the attorney could perhaps maybe parafrase it in a different way, where they would give themselves a little bit more latitude with different sideboards, we're open to that as well. But there has to be some level of responsibility on the applicant, if they're saying they're gonna have youth that are gonna be there with, you know, that are less likely to uh run away or commit a crime against other children or staff, then there has to be a commitment on their part to limit the type of kids that they, they, they take in, so maybe they could clarify that.
Agreed.
You know, I, I- In a lot of what we've stated already, um, we want to take the children who are not yet in serious trouble with the law, um, meaning like violent crimes, sex offenses, things of that nature, I can wholeheartedly see excluding those from our program. And our assessment process and criminal background checks, and the parents signing the release to have access to juvenile records is a mandate for our program, it'll, it'll be required in our policy. So we will do our absolute best to screen out any of the violent offenses, including sex offenses. And staff, they have to legally go through a criminal background check in order to have direct care anyhow, they have to go through the criminal history unit for extensive background checks, we cannot hire sex offenders by law, by code.
So sex offenders and what else was it?
Um, just violent crimes, like assault and battery, and, you know, maybe some of those types of violent crimes.
Is violent, violent crime a defined term?
You know, I don't know the answer to that.
I'm not a criminal law attorney, so I can't speak to that point definitively, but my understanding is it is reflected in local and state laws, and we, we could defer to that.
Yeah.
Um, David Calican and I could um consult with our attorney and see if there's some other parameters that we could consider to propose as a condition of approval, but I don't know if that would be okay to be presented to the board.
I think it's a little late in the game for that.
Right.
I think it's the sort of thing we could offer as part of any further hearing that the board kind of commissions might have.
Yeah, okay.
Is that it?
I think so, yeah.
If I might.
Yeah, I, I think it's important to note that, once again, there's no such restriction that emanates from the Cootney County Code, so in terms of imposing eight point two zero, there, there is really no requirement on the, under the code for such a restriction to be imposed, but, once again, the youth ranch is showing its willingness to work in terms of formulating and structuring a way forward on this point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our hearing this evening on CUP two-two dash zero 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 eight. I thank you all for your patience and your goodwill this evening, it was much appreciated for a very actively involved public.
Thank you.
Thank you for staying light, we appreciate it.
Thank you.